I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. This is the November 13, 2018 Board Meeting, Open Session. Maybe we have the roll call, please.
Director Bernstein?
Present.
Director Carron?
Present.
Director Salado?
Here.
Director Jones?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We had a closed session this evening. There are no reportable actions from the closed session, but for those who follow the agenda, I can say that items from the closed meeting will be part of the Finance Committee meeting next month. Okay. Public comment number one. I have one card to speak. Stephen Kennedy, former member of this board.
Thank you, President Bernstein.
If you take the -- there's a microphone up there. That way we record your words.
Thank you, President Bernstein. Gentlemen, I made this same request to the Board in 2001 as a private citizen after stepping out of my role as a Board Member. I'm here to help you prepare to better educate our at-risk communities and prepare our residents for all emergencies through the use of American soft power, specifically educational videos about suburban forest fires, fire safety, and the environment. Please place on the agenda of your next Board Meeting, under New Business, a request for a letter of endorsement for a nonprofit video. It's for the Samteo County version of the adult homeowner version of the Cannonball Express and the grades four through eight student version of the Cannonball Express. The Samteo County version of the video is available at www.cannonball.org. Cannonball is spelled C-A-N-O-N-B-A-L. We are an organization, so it's .org. And the student version is available by request. My email address is cannonball@earthlink.net. Again, the Cannonball is single N, single L. So far, I have received over 120 endorsements from a wide cross-section of society, from politicians at the local, state, and federal level, from fire professionals, college professors, botanists, foresters, college professors, et cetera, et cetera. I'd like to see your endorsement in this portfolio. In addition, if you believe in climate change as a driver of these mega fires, I could help this -- I could help address the issue through a newspaper article in East Palo Alto today. The article is nearly complete, and all I need is the username and password of your solar monitoring platform. There's nothing there that I could hack. I'd just like to know what the best kilowatt-hour production has been and what the worst kilowatt-hour production has been, on the most productive yield of the day of the year and the least productive. So I just want to look at some numbers, and I'd appreciate your cooperation in that. Thanks very much. I'm here the remaining few seconds I have to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? No. I have a request. You've given us a lot of information very quickly. If you could send it to us in an email, you could send it to me or you could send it to the Board Clerk. I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President. May I have your email address? Personal or Board?
There is a Board address that Michelle will give you.
Yeah, she -- the Clerk can give it to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Michelle, it's fine. Go ahead, please. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I don't see the representative from CERT. Nobody's here to make the CERT report. Item number one. I'll move to item number two, the Firefighters Association Benevolent Activities Report. Rob?
Hey, doing Directors. Again, we appreciate you giving us a forum in this meeting to report on some of our benevolent acts. It's my understanding that last month, we didn't have somebody here. We did have one of our members stand up and give his best recollection of things. And looking at the notes from last meeting, the only thing that I would correct was in regards to the money raised for the Alicia Andrews Burn Foundation. He -- it looks like he stated it was raised through the burn relay. We did participate in the burn relay, and we also participated in a pancake breakfast, which happened here at Firehouse One. As you know, Fire Marshal Johnson's involved in that a lot. So that $10,000, I understand, was 10,000 -- what did they say, John? 10,600?
Right.
It was actually $10,600 raised here during the pancake breakfast. It wasn't raised by the burn relay, but there's a little confusion for people sometimes because we'd give that check at the burn relay. So they're kind of one in the same, but just to clarify, the money was raised through our pancake breakfast held here at Station One. And Fire Marshal Johnson reported about 1,300 people, they expect, that they had at that meeting or at that event. Very well attended. I was here that day on the engine, and there were people everywhere, a lot of good shows and stuff. The Fire Department put on a lot of new things that I think people hadn't seen before, so very well attended. For the month of November, we've had one event already for the firefighters, local 2400 in District 10. On November 10th, we participated in a crash-up derby in Hayward and essentially disputed our title. President John Werger was one of our drivers last year in this event and won the event last year, so this year they participated again. Again, he drove, I think he took second in the relay or the figure-eight-of-death thing that they do, and then another second place in their musical chairs that they participated in. And it's my understanding that he was teamed up on and taken out in the final event, so no place in the last one, but it was a good event, raised a lot of good awareness for what we're going to use for peer support. So I don't know if you guys have heard a lot about what we're doing with peer support, but we're trying to help our firefighters through mental means to help them get through crisis intervention and stuff like that. We have this GoFundMe app that was started prior to the crash-up derby, raised $4,400 through that to help put towards our peer support program. Also, another $700 through a barbecue that they did after the derby was over, so roughly $5,000 was raised at that event to go towards our peer support. It's my understanding that that money will be used to send additional firefighters to get peer support trained so that they can help counsel firefighters when they're having mental issues. So that'll go to training. It'll also go to licensing for the firestrong.org website, which we use to help our members connect to this avenue for help. And it'll also go to creating some videos that our firefighters can access from the firehouse or from home or wherever if for some reason they're feeling that they need help. So it's all going to a good cause. It's my understanding that we also have some flyers now in our firehouses. We have magnets, which again, we appreciate the Chief allowing us to put those things out, and Chief's been very gracious in helping us with this program. It's a program that we feel is necessary. There's been a lot of statistical data on firefighters and tragic things that happen to firefighters because of, you know, stress from the job and things like that. So we're trying to get ahead of that here. Last year, the Chief helped us with a gracious amount of money to get things started, and it's my understanding he's the only Chief in Samteo County that did that, so thank you, Chief. Appreciate your support. And his -- that money was used to send firefighters last year to this class to get trained as well and to start our website, so again, thank you for that. As you all know, the next event coming up for our Firefighters Association is the Toy Drive, so we've already begun that process as well. The annual Toy Drive has begun. We've started making phone calls to get barrels onto businesses and get barrels out in various areas of our community and start collecting toys for the kids. We again wish to thank Chief Chapelman for helping us in the past with that, and hopefully he can partner with us again to help get barricades for our actual giveaway the day that we hand out toys to the kids. It's always nice to have railings and things like that to keep everybody kind of funneled into the channel. Director Bernstein, I know you're familiar with it. Again, we'd extend an invitation to you as well if you want to come and play -- don't tell the kids, but Santa Claus.
This is Big Take, Rob.
What's that?
This is Big Take.
Yeah, so if any kids are watching, spoiler alert.
I don't think they're watching this meeting.
Pause it.
Pretty sure they're not.
Some kids start early, Chief.
Xbox.
Aggressive firefighters trying to get jobs.
That's right.
Start young. But yeah, so obviously that invitation is to you as well. And then the last thing is, as usual, during the month of November, we usually support the St. Anthony's and the Economic 100 Program in our communities with financial donations that's collected from our dues throughout the year. So we give donations to those two groups within the community, and as always, we're grateful to be here and to be able to work with you, folks, and thank you for your time and allowing us to report.
Any questions? I just make one comment. We're not supposed to comment substantively, but I gratefully accept the invitation to play a role in the giveaway.
Participate.
And it's the high point of my holiday, so I'm happy to have the chance to renew it. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Director.
Okay. We don't have anybody who's here for a specific issue, so I think we'll just stay in the normal order and go to the Fire Chiefs Report.
Directors, you have my report before you, and if you didn't see the press release I put out, those are the photographs of the truck outside that you got to see, hopefully, when you came in. You know, the Fire NATO Truck is what we're calling it. It's a survivor of the car fire in Redding, and Mr. Breones, who we work with graciously allowed us to purchase slash loan us the truck. I think once he gets back, me and his family get back on their feet, and I know they talked about wanting it back. His home, his garage, his property, as you can see or if you were able to watch the video clip, is pretty much destroyed. I know, you know, Fire Marshal Johnson was there. He got to go up there and see the devastation from the tornado that hit that area at 143 miles per hour. No one's ever seen anything like it. There's a longer clip that actually shows the actual swirling of the ground. Correct me if I'm wrong, John, right? That shows actually where it's spun in the ground up there, if you look at the ground. So, you know, we're hoping to use this for public education and awareness. I think it's a great instrument to do that, and, you know, we'll be doing some more work on getting this out there, which kind of segues me. I'll go -- I'll jump ahead. I'd written, and then I'll come back, but I'll jump ahead to the part that says, "State Wildland Deployments." Nothing going on. Well, boy, was that wrong. That was a week ago. That was a week ago Wednesday when we put the packet out, and there was nothing going on until that night and then the next morning with the winds. And obviously, everybody's aware of what's happening now up there on the campfire and other fires in the state. We have an engine out with a four-person crew, Chief Long is out with another strike team, and they've been really, really busy. Everybody's been working hard. I don't know when we'll see them next. Based upon the weather forecast, we hear rain maybe by next week. We hear maybe containment up on the campfire by the end of the month, but, you know, nobody really knows with the fire weather and the fuel loading and, you know, that changes from day to day in terms of containment. If you didn't see the news tonight, I heard it as I was coming over. I mean, they found six more bodies, so it continues to have the death toll rise up there in the Paradise Valley area. My parents retired up there. They're both passed, but I can tell you from just experience up there how many elderly retired people live up there, and so I think you can, you know, anticipate that the death toll will go up, I think even more than they found out sadly, just based upon, you know, my familiarity with the community, the number of care facilities up there, and, you know, again, just a retirement spot for people that would leave and cash out of the Bay Area and move up there. So with that, just whip through the rest of it. Don't forget, we have the holiday luncheon coming up. If you have RSVP, please do so. Directors, it's December 18th. We'll have Director Bernstein in terms of his time as President, Director Carpenter, who's going to be leaving the Board. The holiday public education burns, we don't have a date yet in December, but we'll find that out as soon as Exponent gets back to us. And then there's an item in your packet that has to do with adding staffing and minimum staffing numbers, and so that deployment update on Page One and Two is relevant because I took a lot of the data that, when I presented this to committee level, they'd asked that I, you know, changed that report slightly. So I want to make sure I still have the data for staffing that was in there, and we've been progressively increasing and, I think, improving. So the proposal tonight will go into staffing, move from 28 to 31. Part of that is putting the truck in service, but there's another series of reasons too. And recruitment currently, we started with numbers, I think around 360 candidates, got that down to 163 out of the written exam. Shows you how many of them were brought forward to the assessment level and the interview panels, and now we've got that down to those that 19 that went through the Chief's interview process. And the academy will be starting next year in April. Again, that's also going to be in that report. Accreditation update, I'd said December for the strategic plan, but it's actually looking like January, and then that's also the same time Chief Navarro will hear back on the standards of cover RFP that we sent out, and that deadline is January 7. Some information from the Chiefs' meetings, a little update on the town of Atherton. That meeting is coming up on January 22nd. The joint meeting is next year. City of East Palo Alto, one thing that I did not include in here is the number of shootings, multiple shootings and fatalities we had over there in East Palo Alto. Sadly, the evening, actually next morning, of the Arts Center groundbreaking, we had four people shot, two died at the scene, and as great as that Arts Center groundbreaking was and kind of the forward movement and progress of East Palo Alto, you know, every once in a while it still slips back, but certainly not anywhere near what it used to be. City Menlo Park, as you know, the manager has left, but they're working with Chief Bertini on different things, so we had an active intruder course that we participated in, but equally working on them with a variety of issues, specifically the homeless encampments where we're having problems. And I would say the same thing for East Palo Alto with the number of RVs that we have now that have gravitated out there, which is much larger than what we had at the end of Greek Street. We recently had a fire in East Palo Alto in an RV, and the word is, if it's true that the RV was owned by someone who was renting to three people in the RV for about $1,000 a month. So we've seen people who are homeless, and now we've started to see people who are actually profiting and taking advantage of the situation by the tolerance, if you will, of allowing those people to have a home or a place to live rather than, as we see in Menlo Park, people living in the bushes literally near Facebook at what we call the Triangle, which is the Willow, University, and Adams area, that vegetation area that belongs to both Caltrans and then private partners, specifically the Tarletons, who we've been in discussions with out there. Good news on Shake Alert. Shake Alert was -- we started the install process on Station Six, so we're looking forward to that being finished soon. They'll move next to Station Two, so we've been moving forward on that. And then on the facilities projects, I think the biggest one that I want to go into is, if you have any report tonight, which is Station Six, and what I want to tell you is that the equipment out there isn't just for the training and the trailer prop that's out there, but equally, they will be taking the museum apart, the carriage house, so that will be moving over to Station Six here within the next several weeks, and they'll be taking the roof and the belfry off of it to move it. So they've started that process as well. Outside of Fleet Services, which gives you an update on the engines are in Sacramento, two more engines, and again, the truck of the heavy rescue and the airboat and the van. A lot of things going on with the shop, but that's my report, unless you have some questions.
Do they have any questions for Chief? Comments?
Chief, I have two questions.
Sure.
On the Page One at the very bottom, you mentioned that the new truck will not be a system unit available for automatic aid.
Right.
Do we have that option, or how have you exercised that option?
Well, you know, I've exercised that option based upon discussions that we've had, and equally, you know, I know that's not very popular right now with the county chiefs. You can certainly tell me if you want me to change it, but, you know, we've added to the system, and next year, we will renegotiate the agreement for many things. One is it comes due at the same time the county EMS agreement comes due, but it's for dispatch. It's for what will be a reverse for providing medical services and how that's structured. It's for automatic aid. It's for move and cover. It's the greater alarm plan. So one of the things I've been telling the county chiefs is, you know, I don't see this as a system truck just because what's happened in the past is we've literally, on some of these multi-alarm fires, specifically in Redwood City, dumped the entire district out, and that's not acceptable. So, you know, one of the things they've heard from me, and you've probably heard me, you know, to nausea maybe at some point, but when the system, specifically San Carlos, changed, that Redwood City brought them on as a contract, and they decided to make reductions, specifically a B.C. and a ladder truck that we're currently operating in the South Zone, which is San Carlos to the district limits with less resources than we had some years ago. Samteo equally has taken over and joined with Foster City, and they've moved their trucks around, so we have double the distance between the next ladder truck, which is Redwood City, and the Samteo. So I don't feel compelled at this point to, and I know this is problematic for dispatch, to create a second unit that we're relying on, and we've spent considerable, you know, time both to build a new station, order a new truck, staff it, that we would share this with the existing system that we have.
I agree with your point. I guess I was wondering, how do we have dispatch dispatch it within the district but not out of the district?
It's going to be really interesting to see how that happens, and we haven't perfected or solved that yet.
Oh, okay.
They're moving to a new dispatch center this next year. They're upgrading the computerated dispatch system, so right now, county dispatch is having some difficulty processing our requests. One of the things that we could do, which we've discussed at the Chiefs' level, and I'll be bringing this up to the county chiefs, I'm sure it won't be very popular, but they could eliminate through the ordering of stations. We have 50 deep now because you can go into any singular area and see 50 different fire stations that we respond with in the county, and to exclude Station Two from the 50-deep process, that's one way to do this. Interestingly enough, one thing for the new auto aid agreement, if we choose to go there, we could also go to mutual aid, as we brought up, is that we don't get to see anybody's 50-deep ordering unless they want to show it to us. So what's interesting about that is even though they can request our resources, we have no control over how they craft that, which is kind of crazy, but is what's going on. So, you know, in any negotiation going forward, that's not acceptable. We would want to see everybody's ordering list if it impacts us.
The second question I had was, had you -- did you plan an airboat demonstration, or are you happy?
Not yet, but what we wanted to do is give an airboat demonstration to you as the Board Members. I think a lot of times you don't always get to see -- we could park it out front here, but you really don't get to see the capability of that piece of equipment. It's compared to the earliest airboat that we purchased, which was the Panther, there's no comparison.
I'd be interested in that, so I'm just...
Yeah, no, and we'd be happy to set that up for you. I mean, first of the year is probably once the closest we can do it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll go now, please, to the presentation. Stu's not here?
Yes, so Stu Gary, I talked to Stu before he left. He caught me in the garage, but he, based upon the interviews, didn't feel that he was ready to do the presentation based upon having the interaction today with the Board Members. So he had asked if he could do this the next time, just because he got a lot of good feedback, and he wasn't really feeling as if it would work this evening since everything just happened. And I think that's probably a good decision, so.
Well, for the sake of people who are here who don't know, Stuart Gary is the consultant that we've hired to help us put together, and I don't want to get stuck on vocabulary here, but a master plan, a strategic plan, something like that, a consultant to the Board. And he met with individual Board Members this afternoon to just get the process started, and it will continue, and he was going to make a presentation on his procedure, how he was going to conduct this and so forth, but I assume that will be on the December agenda.
Correct, yeah, and he's going to refine that based upon the interviews that he did with all of you today.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move to the consent calendar. There are three items on it. There's the minutes, number item five, the treasurer's report, item six, and the status report for fire station six is number seven.
Move to accept the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's removed by Peter and Michelle, seconded by Virginia?
Got it.
Okay. Any discussion on the consent items? Okay? All in favor of approving the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Five zero on the consent calendar. We'll move now to item number eight, which is a three-year agreement with Facebook for a public service emergency assistant.
And Directors, the staff report that you have in your packet is accurate minus the title. However, in dealing with human resources, we did change the title and some of the information, which is a desk item. So if you follow the staff report outside of the terminology, it's correct. If you look at the desk item, it's correct to the new name, which would be public service assistant position. So that's not what it says in the Chief's report, obviously. And part of that was dealing with limited-term requests is this position would not be in the union because it's limited term, and then equally, when we address the pay, Kathy under this had worked up what the pay would be under what we currently have. If you, at the very end of this desk item, go to the last page, which is some of the costing, that equally will look different just because that's done slightly differently based upon the recommendation of human resources. But let me start with the staff report now that, you know, I've kind of gone through that. So what this is, if you've had a chance to read the staff report, is essentially, you know, a three-year discussion. I wouldn't even call it a negotiation. It's really been, you know, somewhat of a process to work with Facebook as they've expanded their operations. As we all know, the number of buildings, the number of employees, the complexity of dealing with them. We meet regularly with them now based upon, you know, different concerns and risks, and we also, when I say we meet, we jointly meet with law enforcement with them. You know, Facebook's a multinational company. Essentially, they have 25,000 employees in Menlo Park, multiple locations, not only around the world, but certainly now in the region, with plans to even grow beyond that here in Menlo Park, as I think most people know. Whether that happens or not, you know, that's not so much, you know, the concern right now. We believe it will happen, but that's at a pace, obviously, up to the city and them. But they've continued to lease space. They've continued to expand their operations. At the end of the day, this position is a position that we would put in place to work directly with them and embedded to some degree with them because of the constant changes and the need for us to improve our ability to plan, to prepare, to work together on both exercises and so forth from an emergency management standpoint. That's really the key in this whole thing. So, you know, if you look at the discussion, it says closely coordinate, work with, and report to the district's emergency manager. It's crucial for joint planning, preparedness, improved communications, coordination, and response. Key being response. Key being coordination. You know, the problem that we've noticed with Facebook, and I know they probably would acknowledge themselves, is this massive expansion in such a short time at times can be... acknowledge themselves, is this massive expansion in such a short time, at times can be, you know, very difficult. We have people that come and go in positions, people that are promoted, that get more people than that work for them, maybe move from local to global and so forth. And so it's been a, a constant evolution of working with them and trying to keep up with everything that they have going on. And they have a lot going on. And, you know, again, I think whatever your viewpoint of Facebook, or if you use it or don't use it, or, you know, not to get into all the nuts and bolts of, of what they do, but certainly as a large company, the largest company in Menlo Park, you know, we thought this made a lot of sense when it comes to our ability to then work with them and plan for all types of different scenarios that could go on based upon just their corporate footprint within the city of Menlo Park. So if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Again, the contract that you see here has only changed in name. And the reason for that is human resources and the term position. And then, like I said, the very last page has changed as well. And then, one last thing.
Could I just make sure we're clear about this? You're saying only the name of the position has changed?
Correct.
No other terms?
No, and except for the final page, which is the costing. And then from the committee level to this, because Director Bernstein, I know you and Director Carpenter are on the committee, we have looked at a 75-25 in a percent usage, meaning we 70, or Facebook, we would obligate this position to work 75% of the time with Facebook and 25% with the district. I didn't include that in here because in discussions with Facebook, this is variable. It's really what we need to do. Facebook will reimburse us up to whatever percentage of time utilization or cost up to the maximum amount per year of this position. So if we choose to do, you know, 90% at Facebook and 10% working on something else, or 50-50, which may or may not be as effective as we want it to be, so we'll have to monitor anything like that, you know, that's up to the district. But Facebook would not compensate us for hours. This person is not working directly on things associated with their level of preparedness, planning, cooperation, coordination, and response.
Then who would decide that?
Basically, either Ryan Zolokoffer is the emergency manager, or Chief Stevens in operations. Right now, I don't see how we would manage this any differently in terms of, you know, utilization of the position, but something could come up. So I don't want to, I don't want to limit them, but I think, you know, when we discussed this with you in the committee, rather than put, put limits on it or put any kind of parameter, we leave it open for the managers to manage these positions. Another time.
Question.
Go ahead. Parker?
Chief, you know, in the grand jury, it talks about the fire district having this close relationship with Facebook and...
Right.
Being in a position to kind of control or manipulate the fire district. To shield us from that perception, is there, or maybe I'm totally being too far out there to think that that may crop up again in next year's grand jury report. But do you see this as any, in any way, shape, or fashion that might bring itself to any kind of perception of that nature?
Yeah, I actually see it the exact opposite. Number one, we're doing this in a public forum, but I'll let Tim weigh in on what we did before. The term in the grand jury report was donation. There's no donation here, just like we had done for the fire inspector and the planner. These are positions that belong to the district, are compensated by the district, and work for personnel in the district. So they're working towards, you know, the means and ends that the district seeks to attain, which is, you know, as I mentioned, better preparedness, coordination, planning, and obviously any type of response that would be necessary. So, you know, with the agreement, with the staff report, with the way it's constructed, it's certainly not a donation. And it's certainly not under the control of Facebook because we are the ones that control the position that then works with them. And I'll let Tim kind of handle the legalese if you want from what was in the grand jury report, I don't know if you want to say anything to, to them.
No, the only thing I'd add is that there's terms in the agreement that specifically address the issues that you're raising in the context of the grand jury report. So in one of the whereas's, one, two, three, four. The fifth, the last whereas on the first page, talks about the nature of the payment, being a payment for services, not a donation. And then on page two, section four, it specifically addresses the issue that the chief raised about who controls the position. And, and so if you read through, without reading the language in section four, I will just say that's clear, that the position is under the control of the fire district and, you know, it's considered an employee of the fire district. So, so in writing the agreement, we specifically addressed those terms.
Even that 25%, possibly, that doing work for Facebook, that, would that, could that be drawn into the conversation that there is? Any type of control?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start in there, let the chief finish. But I, I mean, the 20, it's a cost allocation mechanism, not a control mechanism. The control is always 100% with the district. It's just a cost allocation and you can expand.
Yeah, so it's a, it would be unit utilization. So it would be a person, how much time we would have them work on something else, like, let's say, planning for the city of Menlo Park, doing their disaster plan, because that's currently something that we do. And we do exercise design with them and different things that Ryan's involved with. So we see some mutual benefit there to work with the city of Menlo Park, but that's equally under a different agreement. However, this could be up to 100% as, you know, as you stated. Like I said, and Tim's hit it clearly within the agreement, Facebook's sensitive to that too. You know, they don't want, they don't want the optics on this to be that somehow they're getting some benefit that, you know, they're not compensating the district for. And obviously, the district, based upon, again, this being the biggest corporate partner that the district has within the, within its jurisdiction, there's a benefit for us to have a closer relationship in terms of planning, preparedness, response, mitigation, and so forth, just because of the size of this entity and how spread out it is over the entire district as well.
And just one, one last point, and I'll stop, which is that in other jurisdictions, for example, planning departments have what they call cost recovery agreements, where if they're working on planning documents relating to a certain development, a certain developer, they charge the staff time to that applicant. And, and so although this isn't exactly analogous, it's similar to the concept that's really a cost allocation issue, not a, like, who controls issue.
Thank you. Peter?
Yeah, I just think we're extremely fortunate to be able to have this level of cooperation because absent this, we still have the response, responsibility for Facebook.
That's right.
If something goes wrong there, we've got to show up and we've got to deal with it. This allows us to work hand in hand with them to make sure that that response is well-coordinated. And when you look at their facility, it's unlike anything that any of us have ever seen before. A desk in, in that building doesn't have an address. You know, so when you get a 911 call from that big, huge building, you know, where do you go? And it's, you know, it's that level of working with them to be able to figure out what happens when something goes wrong in that facility, so that we're not standing out front trying to figure out what we do. And the fact that they'll pay for it, I think, is just spectacular. Now, they could take the position, hey, look, you know, we're paying property taxes. You know, you do this work. But they've said, you know, we understand the value of working together and we're going to own the position.
Very well. I, I think this is something very new for us. I mean, we've never embedded an employee in someone else's facility.
We do it all the time. We've done it in Menlo Park for years. We did it in Atherton before that.
Well, I think they reimburse us for the cost, but we didn't embed them.
No, Ryan Zolokoffer has a desk in the city manager's office.
We did.
He's 100% on their payroll?
No, he was there for one day a week.
He's split.
Right.
But let me say, I, I'm a little concerned about, I, I would like to have the, our attorney address this. There, at the top of page three, there's two paragraphs here. One where we agree not to make any claim against Facebook. The second one is where we indemnify Facebook against any claim. Can you, can you tell us, what are we taking on when we do that? What, what, what responsibility are we taking on, particularly the second paragraph where we, we indemnify them?
Okay, can I take them one at a time?
Please.
Okay. So on the first one, just to explain the terms, and I'll start by saying this is in agreement. And so certainly, there's terms in here that the board is agreeing to, right? Or not agreeing to. So on these two terms, the first one is that, really, this was an ask from Facebook.
This is what?
An ask from Facebook. In other words, this was a term they requested, okay? Both of these terms. The first paragraph is basically explaining that since we have complete control over the PSA, which is the position we're talking about, that the district's not going to make any claim against Facebook arising out of the activities of that person in that position because the argument is that they're 100% in the district's control. And the only thing accepted from that is any claim arising out of Facebook's negligence or willful misconduct in whole or in part. So, you know, so honestly, that's a Facebook ask. In other words, you're saying if you're going to control it, they don't want to have liability for their actions, except if they contributed to the harm in whole or in part. So that's the first paragraph. The second paragraph is the indemnification clause, which says that not only are you saying that you are not going to make any claim against Facebook relating to the position's activity, but to extend, there is some other person that makes a claim relating to the PSA activities, then the district will indemnify Facebook. In other words, a third party can say, this person did acts. I'm going to sue the district, I'm going to sue Facebook. What Facebook is saying, the second paragraph, which you're agreeing to if you accept it, is that the district will pay for both the cost of legal services and any damages that this party's awarded for the activities of the PSA.
So let me ask, this is a very hypothetical question. Where, this person would be responsible for putting together an operation plan, for example, or an emergency plan, or an emergency drill. If something, if there were a drill and something happened where people were hurt, injured, died, whatever, are we 100% responsible?
If it's within the activity of the position, yes. If that's, unless, unless, like the exception says, part of the claim arises out of negligence or willful misconduct with Facebook.
In answer to Director Bernstein's question, you know, if we provide an operational plan to Facebook, which they adopt, and then in implementing that plan, one of their employees is injured or exercised, we have no responsibility for that.
If you...
I think it depends.
Well, I mean, yeah, that, the question would be how the interpretation of the exception would be there. In other words, is that an action that, that is solely a Facebook action? I could say arguably, as legal counsel, we take that, that position. In other words, that was no longer activity of the PSA, right? The PSA did its job. It provided the operation plan, if that's your example.
A proposed operation plan for them, which they can accept or reject, as Menlo Park did, as Atherton did.
Correct.
And once they accept it, though, it's theirs. You know, we don't give them a plan and then give them a guarantee that, you know, we don't hold them harmless on the execution of their plan.
By their, by Facebook people.
You said that's a position we would take, but in fact, we would be paying you to defend us, but we'd also be paying another law firm to defend Facebook.
No, not in, not in that case.
No.
No.
And why not?
Because it's not an action of the PSA.
But wouldn't that have to be determined in court, at trial?
Well, I mean, it would be interpretation of the contract language. So this contract language, for the points it's trying to make, is somewhat standard. In other words, when you're looking, one paragraph is what they call a waiver. In other words, what you're saying is you're not going to take action against Facebook. So that's the first paragraph. And those were, and the second paragraph is indemnification, which goes to third-party actions.
And these two things are not, are not mutual here. In other words, we don't have the same, we don't have the same rights that Facebook has toward us.
The terms are not mutual.
Wow. It scares me to death to think that we're indemnifying Facebook. I mean, they're, they could be sued for literally hundreds of millions of dollars.
No, we're indemnifying for activities arising out of the activities of the PSA.
It's limited to the activities of the PSA.
No, it's very restricted.
Yeah, but what, again, what if, they did the earthquake plan and there were an earthquake and a thousand people died because the plan wasn't adequate?
Yes. You know, it's not our plan, it's their plan. The purpose of this position is to make recommendations to them. And if that, once they adopt it, you know, they adopted it. You know, we're not directing their employees, we're not telling their employees what to do. We're providing their management with professional guidance, which they're free to accept or reject.
Well, that's, that's not what the fourth responsibility here says. It doesn't say make recommendations of what an operations plan, it says provide an operations plan. That means we're providing it, it's our plan.
But I, I disagree with that interpretation.
I think it still boils down to, I can provide you anything. You have a choice. You accept what I provide, or you go get advice, someone to advise you about the plan that I just gave you. I mean, I, I would assume that, that they would take everything on face value that we provide to them. I'm sure that as smart as they are, they would have their own legal team to look over the documents, to look over, see if there's, if there are needs. Now, once you own that, yours, it's not, it's no longer ours. I think what Fire Tim was saying, if there were willful negligence that went on in that contract, in, in that, in that what we provide to them, and we knew that that was against all regulations and we still provided, then I think that would be on us. Because we were professional expert at that point done, and we knew that that wasn't going to work.
So let me, let me, let me add one thing that I didn't have in the report that may be helpful. This is something that they're doing. So they're actually, you know, Facebook, again, they're evolving all the time. They're actually standing up their own unit now to deal with these types of issues, meaning that this individual won't be by themselves. Probably going to be at least three other people that are working on emergency planning and other issues associated with Facebook, which will be more, to your point, more involved with what Facebook employees are doing. What our liaison is doing in there is essentially dealing with the fire component in our interface. Because remember what I said earlier, too? They also have Memo PD in there. So in every meeting that we're going into, the police department's there, the fire district is there, and Facebook, specifically what's been in the past, their security unit is in there. But now that's transitioning, in some cases, to this new planning and preparedness group that's being put together. So they're, you know, they've kind of changed and evolved their umbrella. No different than if you had a, the city dealing with an emergency operations center.
Well, I'll just reiterate again, and I know this sounds critical, but we have assisted, I'm aware of one in particular, East Palo Alto, in preparing an emergency plan. That plan was adopted by the city council as their plan, and it, it basically specifies that emergency workers will meet at the San Mateo River, which location does not exist in the United States. It exists in Brazil and in the Philippines. And I could say that if that happened, if people didn't get service and there were a lawsuit, that we have been negligent and that we could have some major liability here. And it concerns me. I, I, I don't know. It, I mean, this is major stuff. We see what's happening up north with these, you know, where, where people haven't done their jobs, some, sometimes PG&E and all that. We see what's happened to PG&E's stock price as a result of what's considered negligence in an emergency situation. I think this exposes the district to huge liability. And I'm concerned... I think this exposes the district to huge liability, and I'm concerned about this agreement as it is. If it said we provided guidance, that would be one thing, but it doesn't say that. It says we provide a plan, and I think we're warranting that plan to be of the highest quality.
There's no language in here on warranty, none whatsoever.
Somebody has said that we will, Robert said we will do our, you know, a professional job, and if there's negligence...
There's no language in here on warranty. I mean, I think you're reading a lot into this, and, you know, everything in life involves risk. You know, you can't have a zero-risk arrangement.
I have a question.
You know, sure, you can, you can raise anything, I can be sued for anything.
As we know, as we know, right?
Yeah. But we can't, I don't think we can run the district based on worst-case assumptions, on all, you know, 99 things going wrong. We have to do what we think is on balance best. Are there risks? There are risks in everything.
But we've promised to pay not only our legal fees, but Facebook's legal fees if there were a lawsuit, and I, I think it could be argued that Facebook and we have separate interests, and therefore would have separate representation.
Well, a lawsuit involving our employee, you know, not a lawsuit, you know, a lawsuit involving the PSI. I mean, read the language in full, not just simply, you know, a piece of a, of a sentence.
I have a question.
I read it completely, so.
Go ahead, Virginia.
So Harold, because I, I agree with both Peter and Chuck and Robert on a lot of things, and I think it would be, you know, the, Facebook could hire someone, private, a private company to, but the fact that they want to partner with us, I think is a good thing. But the carelessness in some of the, the language that Chuck has brought up, what do we have in terms of checking that there's like another review, or, you know what I'm saying? Because I remember that whole agreement with the San Mateo River, and it's...
Yeah, and, and you got to put that in.
And it's nitpicky, but those nitpicky details are the things that can get us into trouble if we don't check.
So you're going to have, you know, again, this is a person working for the emergency manager.
Yeah.
And there's a person, the emergency manager, works for an operations chief. Right now, weekly, the operations chief, or the operations, the emergency manager and the operations chief at times are in meetings with Facebook and law enforcement, so it's...
That much, the same thing is actually doing the work and putting on a piece of labor.
No, understanding, but they're, they're going to review the work as it goes forward. I mean, in other words...
And we thought that last time, too.
With...
The, the mistakes, the errors, like the San Mateo River and other mistakes that were in the, I'm not saying it's, that it's going to happen.
I think there's a broader story that's not being brought out there. We weren't on contract for East Palo Alto, that was done at no charge to them, and they were supposed to do some things with that, too.
Okay.
So to be, to be fair to Ryan Zolikoff, who did that, that wasn't, that wasn't his intent, but, you know, I don't want to get too deep into that. I mean, any plan that we would do, which would be for an exercise, or a way in which something would happen there, that involves the fire district, is exactly what this individual would be working on. It would be reviewed at two different levels, if not mainstream, then with a broader group that's going to look at it because of their involvement.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Rob.
I'd like to call a question.
Well, that, that's a motion to, to, to close debate. Is there a, is there a second?
I'll second your motion.
All those in favor of closing, it's not discussable, all those in favor of closing debate, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And I'm opposed to that. So we will now take a vote. Do we have a motion on this? I don't think we do.
No.
So actually, that, we shouldn't have done what we just did in terms of that motion, because there was no motion on the floor.
But we've been 20 minutes here talking about it.
I know, but...
We don't have a motion, I mean...
So I'll ask, I'll ask for a motion, man.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement and modify the corrected version of the agreement between Menlo Park Fire Protection District and Facebook regarding funding a limited duration of a public service assistance position. Is that right, Mike?
Yeah.
Can I, I'm sorry, can you say, it's adopting the resolution, approving, just, if you don't mind, is something...
Sure. Adopting that resolution, approving.
I second your motion.
And this was the one provided at the desk.
Yes, guided, correct.
And it's been seconded by Peter. I'll refrain from any more, if you don't have another motion to close debate, I'll just refrain from making my points again, unless somebody else has something to say. Okay. All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
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 And I'll, I'll vote nay, so it's four to one.
So do I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I vote nay.
Oh, I apologize, Rob.
So three aye, and two nay.
It's, it's three to two with Bernstein and Salano voting no.
Could I explain why I voted no?
I'd like to hear.
Go ahead.
You know, I would, I see what, what the situation involving our agreement with Menlo Park in using our emergency planner or manager in order to help them with their situation, but then I see with Facebook is, is a totally different matter, since it's a private entity. I don't have any issues with helping our, our communities, our cities, Atherton, Menlo Park, and East Palo Alto, and even the county, to use our employees that way, but as a private entity as Facebook is, I don't want to get into an agreement with them at this juncture.
Thank you. And I'll, I want to report that I think the risk to the, as, as, as it's stated, I think the agreement is too risky for the district. We'll move then to item number nine, which is the Task Force Three agreement. Chief, do you have...
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Okay, Peter moved, and Virginia seconded. Any questions or discussion?
Okay, just one, one bit of good news, I think, on this, is if you look at the amount, 1.147 million, $900 in there, and that's, that's a slight increase in the allocation from the federal government, although they're specific to certain things that we need to acquire this time around. Obviously, the president's proposing a decrease in future federal budgets of up to 5%. So, you know, I wish there was more than this, too, but that's, 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 this has been a pretty good grant year to get this much money.
Okay. All in favor of approving the, the, the agreement?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five to zero. Item number...
Harold, can you thank Amy for her hard work on this?
Absolutely.
She's been really great at helping out and getting these grants.
And I think with Long, Longlam also does a lot.
Yeah, yeah, and Long. Whoever's, but I know Amy's been, been in charge of all of that, but yes, Long.
She looks really close to it.
Because it's a lot, it's a lot of work.
Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing a contract with an architect for Station Four design.
So Director, it's again brought up at the committee level, but we interviewed four different contractors, as it says in here, and this is the contractor that we thought, or, excuse me, architect, that we thought was the best fit for what we were looking for. We had a pre-existing vendor that we have used before, in fact, two of them, that we've worked with before, but based upon this architect's presentation, based upon how they plan to handle the account going forward, and that the principal, actually, one of the principals is directly involved, we thought this was the best fit for the district. We did have a panel of four people on the interview committee, and we all agreed at the end of the process that this was the best qualified vendor, we thought, going forward.
Can we talk about this in the face of... Chief, it's here. So, go ahead, Robert.
Chief, do you know how many employees they, they have on your staff?
They have two offices, one in Southern California, and one here in, not the Bay Area, but, I want to say Antioch, well, I guess you could call that the Bay Area, but, Director, I don't know. I know they have, you know, they have staff, they'll bring on like engineers and so forth, that they may not be in their offices, but they use. So the two principals that were here, I know there's two locations, I want to say between both offices, maybe 30 employees between Southern California and, and here, and what was, you know, just to give you a sense of comfort, if you're worried about, you know, the workload, is all the other vendors that we spoke to, when we asked the principal, because that's the key, how many accounts they're managing at the same time they're managing the district's account, this actual, this vendor had the least amount of people, right? Probably because the principal was doing it versus some of the other ones where they delegate that off, and so I think he said anywhere from three to five, or others were as many as 10.
I know they had, they had, I think, several projects, local to work on, so that was one about capacity there.
Yeah, and they may assign that to someone else within their office. In this case, having one of the principals work on it was, I think, pretty compelling for us, because that's, in, in other instances where we have not had that occur, we've had a lot of problems, and so here, hopefully, we won't have that.
Go ahead, Rob. I had brought this up, I, I hate feeling like a naysayer on these things, it really, it's very hard, but I, we, we made a terrible mistake when we did Station Six. We hired an architect all the way through. That architect, even though they weren't doing a good job, they raced all the way through, not just the design phase, but also then through the construction drawing phase. They collected their full fee, and when they got all done, we threw all those plans away and started over again. I feel like we're running ahead of ourselves. Six months ago, Station Four wasn't even our priority. I think we should proceed, but I would like to see us proceed only on the design part. And just to be clear, these projects typically proceed in two phases. There's the design, that goes to the planning department for approval, and you get what's called your entitlement, your ability to build, and then it goes, the second phase is when you do the construction drawings, that goes to the building department for their approval. I think we should be approving just the design part, make sure we've got what we want. Right now, what we're going to be talking about tonight, between Station Four and the training facility, we're talking about perhaps close to $50 million in projects. We have about $15 or $16 million available. We can't build all these things, and I think just to, to throw all this money into the architect at this point, I think we should break this into two pieces.
Slices, yeah.
And, and approve only the first phase right now. This is a vendor we've never used before, we've, we've, every time you think we got a great architect, not every time, a couple times when we thought we've had a great architect, we were simply wrong, and turned out not to be a great architect. We ought to find out how it is, what kind of product they do, once we've worked with them through the design phase, which would be, my guess is about a third of this, would be the design, and two-thirds would be construction, drawings. I think then we would be in a position to approve the second phase, because that's my recommendation.
So Director, let me, let me, I actually have a legal interpretation of the contract. So one of the things in here, because I know when you brought that up at the committee level, we did look it up, so I apologize for not getting that to you, but it says in here, suspension termination of services. Owner may direct architect to suspend, delay, or interrupt services in whole or in part for such periods of time as owner may determine in its sole discretion. Owner may issue such directives without cause. Architect will be paid for satisfactory services authorized and performed through the date of temporary suspension. So in, in fact, you do have controls over the, over the time and the cost based upon those statements.
Yeah, this language, section 302, which is on page 60 of this packet, I think explicitly gives us the opportunity, any point in time to call a timeout, we can suspend and then proceed, and we can suspend and terminate. And it's quite clear, it says, the architect shall not be entitled to any claim or lien against owner or the project for any additional compensation damages in the event of such termination and payment. So 302 says, we pay them for what they've done, we're not on the hook for anything they haven't done. So I think your characterization that we are giving them the whole amount of money now is incorrect. Contract provides for them to do work and to bill against that work, and we pay against the billing, but we have the opportunity at every point in time to stop it.
And in doing that same process, you always hold that retainment, you know, so, so they never get all of the, that they bill for, you hold back that, a portion of that, so that until the end of the contract, if they fulfill that, then they get, then they get their all, all their money. But I think the important part, we need to try to avoid having to switch up contractor or architect in midstream, because that will cost us a whole lot more money. So I think the chief has done embedding in terms of the architects, and they have chosen, he has chosen one architect. We're just going to have to go with it. I, I think we need to go with it, because we can't sit back and try to drive this car in the backseat, you know? You need to be in the front so you can see what's going on, and I think even the chief did that, I think was important. Or, and the chief gave the latitude to somebody else. I mean, we need to, we need to stay the course on, on that, and so, you know, architects are just like contractors. You do the same, you provide the same type of process with them, but I think if I understand, this particular architect, he's only working on Station...
Station Four.
Station Four. I don't think that architect is going into any of the other projects that we got, we got on, on the book. So, so I don't know how it became $50 million worth of projects that, based upon this one particular act. I think it's, right now, we're on about a million or something just for the architect fees. I mean, ideally, if you want to see a total budget for the project, that's one thing, but that architect fee, I'm assuming, is, is being pulled out, because that's what is going to be needed first, because the architectural fee is going to drive the, the cost or the understanding of a contractor, what they're going to be it on, and that's the true number that we really need to try to get to. And they can't get to it without having architectural renderings, something to, to put, the million nails they got, they got to ask for, how much, you know, labor is going to be necessary for, to build a certain portion of it. So this is a critical step in terms of trying to assemble all those kinds of big numbers.
But that's what's determined in phase one, is you, you do the design, and then you can actually cost it, then we could know, we would know whether we could build it or not. If we're not going to build it, there's no reason to do construction drawings.
But part of, part of construction and part of development, from my understanding, is that you put together your best performer upfront, based on experience, knowledge that you may have contracts out, some estimated, they give you some costs, but your true numbers don't really come to play until, to that drawing and act you've done, and you know how many nails you need to put into that big structure.
Chuck, it asks...
If you look at this contract, you know, there's an Article III here, Task One, there's an Article IV, Task Two, schematic design phase, there's an Article V, design development phase, there's an Article VI, construction document, construction documents. Now, these phases are all articulated in here, and we have the opportunity at any point in time to say, okay, now, at this point, as we did previously when we had the economic downturn, we put some things on hold that we had planned on doing, but my experience is that if you take this thing in four different stages, that there will be a period of two or three months between the stages while you're coming back and reviewing and talking about it, you go to the next stage, and guess what? That costs money. That delay costs money. This gives us the ability to continue moving as long as we're comfortable with the progress. It also gives us the opportunity to stop it at any point we want to, and it's developed, you know, if you look at these articles on, you know, pages 68, 69, 70, you know, it specifies that there are stages in this contract.
Chief, could you, could you review why, what happened with Station Six, and how it was that we ended up, we, we weren't able to stop the contract there?
It, remind me, so, we weren't...
Station Six... Station Six, we paid for all the way through construction drawings. How did we go that far and then not build the station?
So we, but there is a Station Six, so you're talking about...
We hired a new architect to do all new drawings.
Okay, so going backwards, yeah, I know, I think I know what you're talking about. So we had Mary McGrath, who then merged with Beverly Prior Architects, who then merged with HMC. We, the board, and the chief, we came into the economic downturn, and the board made the decision to not move forward with Station Six and put all our effort into Station Two, but the phase Station Two. Mary, who was, again, who was working on that project, part of the reason that, I wouldn't say she was let go, but we decided not to continue forward, was based upon the difficult performance that we had with her partner, Beverly Prior, that she engaged with. So we had the option to continue on with her, with Station Six, and One at the time, if the board remembers, and we decided, based upon that performance and the difficulty we had with Two in just moving forward, that we didn't want to duplicate that with the other projects that we had in play.
And why did we then have to hire a new architect to do the...
Because she, because they had already given us some basic sketches of what they wanted to do for the fire station.
But they charged us the full amount of the contract?
No, not the full amount of the contract.
I think it was, again, you know, they submitted their cost to date, we paid their cost. I think your characterization is totally incorrect, that there was total plans for Station Six and we threw them away. That's what I was told. Well, like, I don't know who told you that, but I don't think that's correct.
No, they, they came in, in fact, one of the, you know, one of the complaints or concerns was, we did use part of the sketches, basically a schematic design that we had for Station Six, and then we came to the current architect that we have, and we gave that to them. So, you know, they made some refinements and changes, as all architects are going to do, but for the most part, you know, I think we're, Director Carpenter's correct, they, you know, I don't want to characterize it as a failure of the process as much as when we stalled the process because of the downturn, we had a bad experience with the architect that we were working with, not because she was a bad architect, because she was not great at business and partnering. And so we decided, as we were moving forward, we didn't want to duplicate that on the other station, so we essentially stopped working with them and continued with Station Two.
But, you know, the statement that we had a complete set of plans for Station Six and threw them away is incorrect. You know, that just did not occur.
The schematics are early drawn.
But what do you mean schematics? You know, these were conceptual drawings and that kind of thing, they were not construction drawings.
No, they were not construction drawings.
And I think it's really, you know, it's important that we, we just not toss things out like, you know, this is that. That's, that's not what happened. And it bothers me that we just sort of assert as a fact that we got the plans for Station, and we threw them away, and we hired somebody else to plan the station again, but that's not what happened. When I joined the board, I was told that's what happened, and that's why we, that's why we had the cost overruns and some things like that. You know, I think you, again, have simplified what somebody might have told you, and now tried to make it into... Well, Peter, you may be glorifying what somebody told you, neither of us know firsthand, and so don't make a assumption about my thought process. I was here, I know firsthand, I was here. Well... And we can go back through the records, but to sit here tonight, I'm not going to sit here tonight and let you make a statement which I know to be factually incorrect. Well, I will, I will conclude my words by saying, I think it's a mistake to approve the whole thing here. We don't know whether we're going to go forward with the station when all said and done. I think to give a contract, we also have, even though we could tell them to stop, we don't know exactly where they are in the process, they can race ahead. And Robert talks about, oh, we'll have this holdback, and we were told the same thing about Station Two. We did hold back the money, but lo and behold, they threatened the lawsuits, and we gave them all the money. We never exercise our ability to control these contracts, we simply don't do it.
Contingency, when I look at Station Six, I, when I look at how it's broken out, I see contingencies, and that's what I'm talking about. Contingencies in, you know, with held back, and there's some, there are about three hundred some thousand, I think, dollars left in contingencies for that particular station. So that's what I'm referring to. You all, I mean, you have, I mean, to be in the business, I mean, anybody, you have to hold back that, because you never know. And you want to hold that back, that money on each draw, so that if the architect, contractor, whoever you are on board, missed the boat somewhere, or missed putting a nail in, you want to have money to set aside to have somebody else to come in there and fix it. And that's just how, how business is working, from what I know.
And let me just add, there is, so there is no, I wish it was, there were perfect projects, there, there haven't been perfect projects. I mean, last time we hit the recession on Station Six, we, we were involved with the city of Menlo Park, that became extremely problematic. And right now, with the building boom going on, I mean, we're not even guaranteed, as we've seen others deal with, that once we get a contract to actually build the building, that, you know, what the cost for that will be, because right now, you know, it's, contractors get to pick and choose what they want to build right now, and they can certainly get to set the price point too, so.
I don't think we have a motion.
Yes, we did have a motion, we started with a motion.
Did we?
Yeah.
I'd like to call the question.
We, we didn't have a motion to start.
You know, we moved, just to...
Well, my recollection, okay, approval, I thought I made a motion to approve the resolution authorizing fire G six with the contract. And I thought Robert seconded it.
Okay, so let's, Peter, okay, so we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, item number eleven. This is authorization to increase FTE positions, although I think the title is a misnomer, and I'm saying this positively, we're doing this for other purposes than increasing the staff right now. I'll let the chief explain that.
Yeah, let me just get...
Let me just make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the increase in staffing from ninety-seven to a hundred and three.
And I'll second that.
I got it.
That's good, because now we're...
Now, we have a discussion.
Appreciate that. So Directors, this was, again, presented to the Strategic Planning Committee. This is something that we did last year, we took it from ninety-four to ninety-seven. Actually, in discussions with strategic planning, we discussed this, and I had it earlier at a hundred, after some debate back and forth with the assistants of the directors that are sitting here, we had discussed moving up to a hundred and three. And if you look in the discussion and you go back in the chief's report, I think you see some of the more substantive items that, you know, address this, if you haven't read that already. But per the directors of the committee, I tried to refine the report that I had before, so this probably looks a lot different than what I presented to the committee, but at the end of the day, this allows us a ceiling on the number of employees that we can hire for a variety of reasons that are listed in here, none the least of which is that we can no longer do a, we can no longer offer a position of employment, a conditional offer of employment, without having a space to put someone, which in the past, we had handled a little bit differently. We were doing backgrounds on people, and not necessarily, based upon how this new ruling reads, able to hire everyone that we did a background on, so we kind of did a bigger swath of, you know, who we were looking at. So this helps with that. In addition, if you remember the other part in the chief's report, we have twenty-eight personnel currently. We would move to thirty-one first of the year, which puts the truck in service down there at Station Two. And in addition, we have retiree positions, as well as this last go-around, we've had people that did not continue on in the academy that either resigned or left, and so we end up with vacancies. So this gives us a comfort level, allows us to hire not only the first three on the current ranked list that we have, but the next three. And this is a very competitive time, a lot of agencies are vying for candidates, so this strategically allows us to get what we believe are the top candidates. And in the world of timing, they don't start the academy until next year, April, and we don't see them on the floor until July. And that's when they start their first year of probation, if they pass everything. So there's a lot of moving pieces, I've tried to narrow it down as to the why, but, you know, one hundred and three personnel, as the committee agreed and recommended, I think, is, is the right number for us to continue to move forward, have adequate staffing, and hire people in a way in which we'll, hopefully, be as close to fully staffed as we can be. The other point that I would make about this is, this is a dynamic process, and one variable that we do not have any control over is retirement. We have a number of people who are eligible for retirement today, who could walk in tomorrow and say, I'm out of here. And replacing those people is not something that you could then do the next day. And so the purpose of this is to make sure that we have a buffer in place, and we can accommodate those changes, rather than saying, oh, geez, somebody unexpectedly retired, you know, let's do a recruitment, let's send them to the academy, let's send them through probation. What we're trying to look at is always being in a position, when the shift begins each day, we can staff that shift without overtime. That's the objective.
Let me say, because I'm, I'm supporting the concept here, and let me restate it, make sure that I, my understanding is complete, Chief. The, we are making a planned increase in staffing in January.
Correct.
When the new truck goes into service at Station Seventy-Seven, that was?
Two.
Station Two.
Yep.
We're going from twenty-eight to thirty-one.
Daily staffing, right.
So we're not, that is, is an increase in staff, but this, we're really not changing the staffing, we're just starting to put people into the pipeline, so that they'll be coming out of the pipeline when we need them. Is that...
Ideally, that's, yeah, that's correct. I mean, again, even if we put people in the pipeline, as Director Carpenter said, you know, it's never a guarantee everybody gets through this system, we don't have retirements. And then there's one more anomaly, but, you know, I don't want to get too deep, and that's workers' compensation, that's an injury, right? That's totally out of our control in some, you know, respect, so I don't look at that as much, although we follow it. Yeah, this, your point is well said, you know, remember, they don't start the, they don't start on the floor until next year, the beginning of next fiscal year.
So in theory, there could be something where we end up having an extra person that we really didn't intend on, but it just happened. But we know that within a couple of months, something swallows up that person and it's gone.
Right, and, and we've spent the last four, almost five years, trying to move from staffing levels down in the seventies to getting back into the nineties. So it's not, it's not like we did it overnight, and, you know, again, it's sometimes as fast as we were getting there. I think last year, when I brought this to you, I told you that the very day that we brought staffing up to the, finally to the minimum level, that I got a letter, a notice of retirement of one of the firefighters, so we attained it for one, one day. So this gives us that buffer, I think, that's necessary in there.
Any other comments or questions, Rob?
Chief, to be clear, even if you have an additional firefighter, let's say, on a shift, he can be utilized for a multitude of things that need to be done, correct?
Well, there's always seats on the truck because of annual leave, sick leave, workers' comp, and to your point, yeah, other things that happen, so.
So it might be you, since you have the three shifts, and that there's a likelihood of vacation, retirement, sickness...
Deploy.
And a whole...
That's right, deployment.
Deployment, the way we've been doing it, so there's... It's not like they're going to sit in some room somewhere and watch television, that's what I'm trying to...
Nobody's sitting around, I can tell you that.
So you can always find something for them to do.
And we...
If you look, for example, at overtime, right now, the way that we deal with a lot of these things is by pulling people back in on overtime. You know, we deploy people to a strike team, we immediately bring people back in to fill against them so that we're not shortchanging the community, but we, the only way we do that is with overtime. So there's plenty of opportunities to reduce overtime if you happen to have one more person than you expect to have, because you have much less overtime.
Right, Peter, I put that out there, that some people, who would have been explaining, don't understand that, that we may have an extra position, and it's just not going to go to waste.
Right.
So that's what I'm trying to put out there.
And we, yeah, you're very correct. We have an overstaffing model that we used in the past. I don't think we've been overstaffing in quite some time, based upon everything going on, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, Peter's made a motion, Virginia seconded it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Slide zero.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twelve is the Fire Chief Evaluation. Is that a committee report, or Chief, are you reporting on your own evaluation?
I think it's a committee report, huh?
Is that from you, Virginia?
Yeah, it's from the HR Committee, and Robert and I met to talk about the timing and the process for the chief's evaluation, because usually it's later than it probably should be. And we wanted to move, Robert and I discussed this, and we wanted to bring it to the board and recommend that we move the date up, and as you can see in the discussion area at the bottom, so that the start date would be to, well, basically, to establish an ad hoc committee today. Have Myers-Navey distribute the evaluation form to the board, as we've done in the past. December third, we'd like the evaluation forms completed and returned to Myers-Navey. December sixth, the ad hoc committee would meet with the fire chief to review the evaluation forms. December eighteenth, we could have a closed session to discuss the chief's evaluation. And the reason that we wanted to move this up was mainly to get Peter's input, because you've, you know, been a big part of this year, so, and we want, we want your input.
Well, I think that's fair to Harold as well.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to say, that was the main thing, is it's fair to you, and it's fair to Harold for him to receive your feedback as the fifth, you know, as a board member, one of the, of the board.
So we're in five minutes at the board meeting.
Right, so...
What'd you say, Robert?
I said, we're in five minutes at the board meeting.
Right, that's right. So in the past, regarding the ad hoc committee in the past, it's been the president and the vice president, but I think last time, Peter and I...
Yes.
Did this, because Robert was new to the board at the time. I think you were president of the board. So I just, I mean, I'm happy to keep that in place right now, is that we've done it before, or if you, if you'd like, if the board likes, would like to appoint an ad hoc committee with me, or give me suggestions, let me know, or let Chuck, actually, probably the president know. This is why you're getting evaluated, Daryl, so that, that's the process, yeah.
Are you done?
Yeah, I'm waiting for, so everyone can hear. So anyway, that was just this draft process, just to move, mainly to move the timing up. One last thing is, in our board policies and procedures, we have a timeline, sorry, that we can change when we normally review our board policies and procedures, but this is what the HR Committee would like to recommend for this particular review. Rob, I'm, so, I'm not the president, so, I don't know, Peter and Robert, but I want to consider Robert cutting it.
Peter was first, so I take Peter and then I'll...
Well, do you have any additions to what I just said? Okay.
Okay. I would just suggest that we consider condensing the schedule there.
Okay.
And instead of having an ad hoc committee, that we have a special meeting of the boards.
Okay.
And then we do that at that time. And the other advantage to that is...
Well, but wait, so you're saying that we should get the form starting on November fifteenth?
And by December sixth or shortly thereafter, you know, work with Michelle to find a time we can have a special meeting, and rather than have an ad hoc committee, just have the five of us meet with the, with the chief and evaluate his performance.
I'm okay with that, I just, I just wanted to...
And the other reason to doing that is, I think it's in our best interest to separate this in time from the December...
this in time from the December meeting, at which time, you know, I feel that we, you know, when I talked earlier with Tim, you know, at that time, hopefully, the results of the election will be certified, and we will seat the new members. And so I'd like to deal with this as an old member process, and then the new members can start with the new agenda and move on from there. And hence, I'd like to separate it from the December 18th meeting, if other people are comfortable with that.
Are we gonna use the same form, Virginia, that we used last year?
Yeah, unless y'all have other changes. So that's whatever, because I think that form is in our policies and procedures. And if everyone's okay with that, then that's fine. But if you have some changes, let us know, because I do think that if we're gonna condense the actual meeting times, that we still need to get the actual forms from Myers-Nave to the board and then get it back to Myers-Nave.
And just, our plan, unless you direct otherwise, was to distribute the forms that were used last year.
Right, that's what I was saying.
It's on the 15th, which is.
Two days from now, right.
So I mean, you can provide direction, but I understand, at this point.
Right, well, but you brought up a good question, Rob, because we haven't updated the form, but if everyone, again, if you, if you want to update the form, then you gotta let us know ASAP, because this is, this is gonna happen quickly, mainly because of the December.
That's why I pulled the form up from last year.
Yeah.
I've just looked, I mean, I don't.
So let me, I'm just looking.
Can I ask a question on the calendar, though?
Yeah, I'm gonna look at the calendar.
So if we finish this, and it's returned to Myers-Nave on December 3rd, on December 6th, were all the results available, the summary available, is that what this means?
Yeah, I mean, we can do this. I mean, obviously, it's a tight timeframe, but all we do is consolidate.
Co-lead.
Right, co-lead, and also, it's anonymous, you know, so they're not.
Right.
Right.
So.
I mean, it's a short timeframe, but we can do it, as long as everyone gets it to us on the 3rd, I mean.
But you gotta get it to him on the 3rd.
At the latest, right, exactly.
Yeah.
So we could have the board meeting, as Peter suggested, anytime from the 6th on?
It's up to Michelle to work with people finding out when they're available.
Yeah, yeah, so we just had the December 18th meeting, which is our normal board meeting, but we can certainly do it before. That's fine, too. The question is, how long do you think you'll need, Tim, in your office? Like about a week?
No, it's a three days.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're agreeable to your schedule about.
Three days.
So, so we could, okay, so by.
Anytime after the 6th, that Michelle can find available.
Three business days or three calendar days?
Just what you're showing. It's okay.
I understand that.
He would have it by the 6th. He would be done by the 6th.
I know what she was asking.
No, no.
Monday, Monday is the 3rd.
Yes.
And that's fine to have it back by the 6th. If that's your request, we're, we're saying that's okay.
Okay, that's, thank you.
So anytime after the 6th, we have a special meeting?
That's right. Between the 6th and the 18th, we would have a special meeting of the board to evaluate the chief. So, okay, are y'all okay with that timeline?
Yeah, I think it's great.
Okay, perfect, so that means.
Chief, remind me, though, we have a compensation contract that's already done, so this is purely the evaluation, is that right?
That's right, that's the beauty of it. Yeah, one of the reasons I brought up Director Crawley into the committee was because, yeah, in the past, it kinda gets a little disjointed at the end of the year, and then it's not worth of the next year, and next thing you know, it's, you know, it's April, right? So it'd be nice to get it done this timely this year. And then, one, let me add a couple of things. So if you go to the subsequent pages in here.
Yes.
I tried to give, since I knew, and I made this mistake last year, I knew that you were gonna do your evaluations, and you have to work off of something other than maybe memory, how great I am, right? No, just kidding. So, you know, the, here is, here are things that I put in there, just to give you an update on, you know, what we've been working on, what you've been asking me to work on, and just, that way you have actually something tangible to work from to, you know, as a frame of reference, rather than just memory. Because last year, and some of the comments I noted in there is, you know, the chief's thought you weren't doing this as an example. Right now, let's focus on those things, because it, you know, I think sometimes then that wasn't clearly articulated, that we were working on different things. And, you know, let me just say, I don't do all these things by myself, so, you know, I appreciate the staff that we have, because a lot of these things get accomplished because of them, not necessarily because of me, but you evaluate me, so that's in here.
So by consensus, can we just say we have a process here?
Yeah, we don't need a motion on this, direction staff.
And you're clear on what we're doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
She's crystal clear.
Let's move on to item number.
Well, wait, so Michelle, I want, so you're gonna act, you're gonna pull us for a date for this, but ask between the 6th and the 18th.
Yes.
Okay, just to confirm, that's the direction.
Close session board meeting, yes.
Yep, for the chief's evaluation, which will be a closed session.
Yeah.
So, one last thing, so are we still, because the holiday part is on the.
18.
18?
Yeah.
At 12.
Yes, sir.
And so we're gonna have a board meeting at 5, or 6, 7, the same day?
Well, either 6 or 7.
Same day.
But this need, the evaluation needs to be separated.
It's separate, yeah, it'll be before the 18th meeting.
Okay, let's move on then.
And wait, let me, and just to confirm, I am not, we're not having an ad hoc committee, just to confirm that.
No, it's the, it's the, the whole.
Yep, yep. Great, that's it.
Okay, agenda item 13, which is the training facility.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, and it's applicable on the first page, because I think that's a little bit confusing. I encourage you to go to page 3, under the recommendation. And the motion I would make is that we establish an overall estimated budget of X for this project, and retain the professional services and experienced architect for this project. And then in the course of our discussion, we can decide what X is gonna be. And the reason I've chosen that is because we're talking about an estimated budget, as opposed to the first page talked about approving a budget. And I don't think we're in a position to approve a budget. I think what, you know, the recommendation is in fact more correct, that we will establish an overall budget of X amount, depending on which option we choose, and retain the professional services and experienced architect for this project. Now, well, is there a second to that motion?
Okay, so Robert is second to Peter's motion. Okay, chief, did you wanna?
Yeah, let me just say this, so you know, again, this has been an evolutionary process in terms of getting to this point. And, you know, I would agree with Director Carpenter in terms of establishing a budget, getting an architect on board. Estimate, thank you. Estimate a budget, and then getting an architect on board, because, you know, things are still being refined and improved. But I think we've come a long way in terms of substantiating the need, what we're trying to do, giving you different drawings and potential, you know, potentially what this can look at, certainly there's more work to be done. But, you know, it occurred to us, even as we were doing all that, we could do our best work, and we still may not be right on. So at this point, you know, we've, we've made a lot of changes already, and if you go to the options on fiscal impact, I think we've, we've discussed it already quite a bit, we've talked about objectives quite a bit. I don't know if I would need to redo that, because we've done that in the past, so I'm trying not to waste your time unless you want, have specific questions. But what's new in this one is looking at the different options, which is on page 3, which talks about a four-story, a five-story, a five-story that's got more square footage, actually, three options on a five-story is really, you know, what we're looking at. Remember, there's been all the way up to a seven-story option that was out, which we took it off the table, we thought was too big. You know, we started getting a larger square footage, it's massing. And then one thing in here, too, is don't forget, and we haven't talked about this as much, that the simulator or tower's got a lot of discussion, but not as much about the classroom, the site work, and the proposed storage, and so forth. So that's kinda baked in here as well. And I know we had brought that up at one point, but I'm not trying to just get around it, I just didn't know if we needed to have more discussion about it, because again, estimating and bringing an architect on board will give you, I think, a better idea of what this could look like down the road. So with that, that's the report.
Careful on the move.
Go ahead, Robert.
Is it not understanding that the tower, we're talking about bringing an architect on for the tower?
Correct.
In terms of the other part of Fire Station 1, are we gonna use the same architect for that portion, for the rehab or expansion, or are we gonna look at a entirely different architect?
So, well, it could be one or the same, but we had said, we're gonna call this 300 Middlefield, because we were separating the fire station, which early on, to your point, was in this, but we decided to change the priority of Fire Station 4. We did identify where, if we, if we increased the size of Station 1 to a different footprint, would it interfere with anything that we're doing behind the station? So for purposes of discussion, this does not involve Fire Station 1. It involves everything backwards, the training facility, the classroom facility, storage, and even potentially putting a house over here, moving the house that's behind 170 over here, and then all the flat work that would be necessary to expand to the footprint of the land that we purchased.
One thing you might, might want to consider is, you know, one architect, one idea, one design scheme, for the whole, for the whole piece. Maybe you get a kind of scale in terms of pricing, too, versus having individual architect for one, and then you got, you got somebody else with another one. You might get a better pricing by putting it all together, that's, that's one thing to consider. The other part would be in terms of design, just overall aesthetically designed, my, my imagination and design may be different from Rob's, and so it may be a mismatch of ideas coming into play. So that's, that's the other, the reason. Because when I look at that, the number here, the numbers for the tower, I'm trying to, trying to get an idea of what the other numbers would look like for each of the other pieces, and trying to put it all, put it all together. And I think if we can, it would be ideal to get one schematic for, for the overall piece, so you have one contract competing on, on all. Because as you know, height, any unusual, once you get around the basic box, everything starts, the prices start changing. So how much beyond just a square box that the design go after, or look after, look at will increase the cost.
So let me, let me address that real quickly. So one of the good things in the WLC contract for Station 4 that we actually had discussed with the vendor, was that the vendor would not charge us, again, for a new set of drawings. So we essentially could take the Station 4 design and drop it on this lot. And the reason that we didn't include the fire station in this drawing was a lot of actually discussion with the committee as well. Part of that has to do with the city of Menlo Park. City of Menlo Park obviously wants us to include all those things, but that also adds additional cost to doing all that. And I know there was some concern about, you know, because of the problems that we had at Station 6, not kind of getting siloed or stuck into certain things in a way that we would do it, and then later on, maybe having to change that, including in timing, meaning that the city would expect for us to build a fire station within a certain amount of time after the training facility, classroom, and other elements were completed. That's why we kinda separated, because the city, I think, wants all that to get done within one fail swoop, and I don't think, you know, that's a wise decision to do it that way. I don't disagree with anything you said. I think the, what we're trying to avoid is getting kinda backed into, yeah, one way. And we felt that certainly on Station 6.
Especially to go beyond a year, that doesn't permit.
You know, well, you know, and having gone through an economic recession on that building, and then still having to jump through all the hoops with the city, and not to get too deep into it, but let's face it, you know, when that, when the house behind Station 6 wasn't included in the, in the general plan, in the downtown specific plan, the district had to pay for the $80,000 for all the EIR and SEQA items, which are covered in the downtown specific plan. But because the city chose not to include that, we paid those additional fees. So, cuts both ways.
I, I wanted to pass out something, I'm gonna pass some copies here. This is, relates to this facility. I just, can I pass these three things down to you? This has some information, it brings back something that Rob brought up, and if you could send that down to Michelle, so she gets a copy, too, I appreciate it. This is, this is the description of a training facility that Hayward has approved. And what's interesting here, Rob, you brought up several meetings ago, the idea of doing some sort of joint venture, getting other partners and so forth. This describes a joint venture between Hayward Fire and Chabot College. The training facility, it's an interesting thing, I mean, it's specifically, I guess, tailored for that area in so far as it includes both a BART car as part of it, and an airplane as part of it. It's $60 million also. But I, I think, just, I know this one took me to task on what I said a minute ago about the amount of money. We're talking about a new Station 4 that could be $15 million. We're talking about something here that just with rough estimates could be 25 million. That's 40 million right there. We don't have that much money. And I'm, again, concerned about charging full speed ahead with an architect to do plans for a facility that we can't build right now. But it's possible that if we had partners or something, that we could build it. So I'm just throwing out this idea, saying, you know what? We've got College of San Mateo up here, they have a fire safety program, we probably should be talking to them about some sort of joint venture, to what extent it could be part of our educational program or other agencies. Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I, I did some research myself, and I found out, chief, and you can help me with this, I mean, you're, you're a fire chief. There really isn't a total, full-purpose training facility in San Mateo County, correct?
Well, when you say full-purpose, for?
Well, I mean, like, like what Hayward's trying to do here with this, and I know that the College of San Mateo, it appears to me that every fire agency has a little bit of something, but they really don't have, like, like we have the drone program. And if we wanted to make, like, in a SWAT operational facility to cross-train police and fire, we don't have that on the police end or the fire end, where it's like one-stop shopping, correct?
That's correct, yeah. We allow law enforcement to use our facilities many times because they don't have anything. And in terms of training facilities, within this county, that can actually do some type of burning, you have Coastside, South San Francisco, and Foster City are the only ones that currently burn. South San Francisco uses gas, because Class A is a problem. Foster City still burns Class A, but it's out by the bay, which is helpful. I'm not sure what Coastside, I think Coastside's using gas as well. But there is nothing between Foster City and Fremont, and maybe Mountain View, where you can do multiple things, like fire, you know, firefighting. In terms of law enforcement, joint use, the only one I'm aware of is Santa Clara City has a shooting range and a training, fire training facility all in the same block.
You have, even Santa Clara Police Department used to use defensive driving course either with Evergreen College. So there isn't really any, as, you know, when I was a federal agent, you know, we had Quantico, and we had acres and acres of shooting house, skip path, you know, the whole.
Wish we had all that.
Well, I mean, so it was all encompassed at, at Quantico, you know, Marine Corps Base and stuff. I have another National Academy here, I do think Batista's, too, but, but there isn't anything in San Mateo County.
No.
That combines not only all of fire, but all of police and fire, right?
Yeah, I think the closest years ago was Mission College, which, because of the value of the land, is gone. I know there was a driving course out by Great America, and I don't believe that's there anymore.
Right, and I mean, I see a need for that myself, to get a combined law enforcement and police. And I know when we had talked about it before, and we kind of hashed around a little bit, that the other agencies weren't going to contribute or didn't have the financial monetary funds. So we had that issue. I know we have these community colleges like Evergreen, which is Santa Clara County, but College of San Mateo that has a has a facility, but but there isn't any agency or either on a junior college level or training level like like with the academy, the police agencies, where it's all in one stop shopping. And you're you're the chief. I mean, do you think they'd ever go along with a combined law enforcement, police, or anything like that?
Well, I know that we have. So at our training facility out by the Dumpart Bridge, the Balens facility, we do individual agreements with law enforcement agencies as long as there's a common need. And, you know, I have to constantly try and reel that in a little bit because everybody's looking for space to go do something to your point. So, you know, they do a lot of, you know, because it's off the grid, behind the PG substation there, there's a car stops that get done out there where they can practice doing those and so forth, and they also use our live fire prop, which is a multi-story facility for active intruder and things like that, to practice some of that. Some of that's specific to law enforcement only. We don't necessarily always train with them. Some of that is, you know, I don't I don't know all of the training that the law enforcement agencies do out there, but I know that when they request it, we allow them to use it, and it's really, there's no fee except for they pay for the cost of the portable toilets that are out there because we have to pay for servicing those. So there, you know, in terms of other use here, I know that we're, you know, to your point, a big enough facility, even with what we proposed, to do some of those things, and if they would want to do that more in the open versus, you know, where not necessarily the general public can see them doing what they're doing.
Well, if we would build something like this, you know, I have to use the baseball term, if we build it, will these other agencies come and at least to utilize the facility? Do you think? Or would it be a situation like Coastide has that that fire training facility and it's so far away that it's going to be hard for us to drive all the way over there and use it? So I mean.
Let me let me go off the South San Francisco model. So South San Francisco made it, they basically turned their facility into proprietary. They were going to try and make money off it by charging for the gas, at least the gas on the recovery, and it became kind of a red herring because many of the agencies that would have used it for free, which is everybody's favorite word, no longer chose to use it. And so, you know, that kind of put them in a weird position because they thought it would be more of an enterprise, at least for even just cost recovery, and it turned into not being that. You know, again, agencies, if they can find a way to do something for nothing, especially on, you know, economically difficult times, they're going to do that. I I would love to tell you, we get all these people to jump on board, they're all going to give us some money, and we'll get it built, but that's not been my experience. Now, getting a grant, certainly something, you know, the more partners you have, you can apply. But as you know, some of those funds over the years have started to kind of dry up too. Doesn't mean we can't or shouldn't try. I would be careful on on making a condition of moving forward because we tried that with Fire Station Two in East Palo Alto at the height of the, you know, economic downturn, and I think, and, you know, at that time, made a really good plea as a disadvantaged, very difficult community to to, you know, to have there, and I thought was super compelling with legislators who weighed in, and we still didn't get it. So, you know, they funded solar across the bay, but they didn't fund the firehouse. So I wish I could predict what, you know, gets funded, but, you know, and all these things, I think the ideas are great. I just have seen people struggle with the reality of agencies joining if there's a cost, and then equally getting grant funds, even when you have partners.
What about our, since we're a test force three with FEMA, is there any DHS things we could have, we hang our hats on?
So you got.
Is it like a?
You got your 1.147 million. That's what they gave you.
Okay.
So they'll say, that's nice, now take it out of your cooperative agreement funds.
Thank you, G.
Which which wouldn't be which wouldn't be bad if we were in Tennessee, because then we'd have a lot of money. But, you know, barrier wages, it's tough.
Peter?
Yeah. I'd like to try to reframe the question that we're dealing with here. When we deal with the question, are we going to build a new fire station? We have a pretty good feel for what a new fire station is. I think it's a little bit of a stretch to sit here and say, do we want option one, two, three, or four, based on square footage and heights and and dollars rather than functionality? I am a great believer that this district needs a new training facility, and a new training facility which is dramatically different than what we've had in the past, which is basically designed as a typical training tower. There are lots of situations that we're faced with now that we don't have adequate space for. When I was at Stanford, one of the things that we did when we decided that we were going to build a new facility is we went through what was called a programming phase, where you hired an architect to work with you to define the building in terms of program. You know, you need X number of space for this thing, you need Y number of space for this thing, and those spaces need to have certain characteristics. And then you added it all up, and you came up with, okay, now we can say to a design architect, here's what you need to design, here's the program that the design needs to fulfill. When we start going talking about fire station, we have, you know, it's a three bay fire station, and it has X, Y, Z, and we've done it time and time again. We haven't done this before, and we're trying to move beyond the state of the art. We're trying to be ahead of the curve in terms of the capabilities of this thing. My preference at this point would be say, hey, let's keep moving ahead on this. But the next phase is to hire somebody to work with us to define what this facility is going to do and to begin to put parameters around how many square feet you need for this function and this function and this function, so that when it then comes back to the to the board, it's to build a facility that has so many square feet and has these capabilities. And so, and under this model that I'm describing, which is not consistent with the motion that I made, you know, we're not approving an estimated budget because we don't have something to estimate a budget for. What we're saying is, yes, continue to move forward on this aggressively, but the next stage is to come back to the board and say, we want to build a facility that will perform these six functions, and it's going to need this many square feet, and these square feet are going to be very expensive, these square feet are going to be inexpensive, et cetera. I would love us to do, you know, what Hayward's done is finding a partner. You talk about USAR, well, you know, Texas has got a great arrangement with Texas A&amp;M. But, you know, that wasn't that wasn't USAR money that built the Texas A&amp;M facility. It was it was like Chabot College partnering. If we can find a partner, that's great, but I think the first stage in even finding a partner is saying to a partner, this is what we want to do. And and I don't think we have enough definition of what we want to do yet. So that's the phase, that's what I would encourage us to think about. I don't want to send a signal that we're not pursuing this facility, but I do think that we need to be clearer about what it is we're trying to build than just X number of square feet and so many stories tall.
So are you withdrawing your motion?
I will at some point, but I just.
Okay, okay. I want to second what Peter said. I have the same problem, looking at this sort of chart here, it's just cost multiplication of dollars and so forth, without knowing what the functionality is and so forth. The only the only thing where I would add to Peter's comment here is that I think these things, that is, a search for partner could proceed on a parallel track, and the reason they say that is that a partner might want some things that are different than what we want, but complementary to what we want. So if it were law enforcement, they want might want something, and if it were other fire agencies, they might want something. And that they're probably, I mean, if we could start with like 10 potential partners, CSM, and just name a few places, and just even a phone call, just I think this idea of starting to say, we're starting to talk about this, would you have some interest in talking with us? It certainly wouldn't hurt for us to do our own programming to know what we want to do, like Peter was suggesting, but I I hate to close it off and say, this is only what we're doing.
Sure. Well, just so you know, I have contacted our partnering fire agencies that are borderless, including Palo Alto, and they're, you know, they're always interested in coming over. They're not necessarily interested in joining and the building of anything.
Me too. Robert? Chief, I think it's kind of somewhat coincided with he was, I think, was alluding to, but in terms of functionality of the building, I assume there, I'm looking at the different line items or the cost categories, like there there's a tower that somehow, depending on the storage, is a wish list, classrooms, I guess, underground classroom size.
Based upon 75 people.
75 people.
Yeah.
I assume there's a, you know, well, site is just metal, you know, clearing the land and getting some of the underground work going.
Right.
And then some type of storage facility.
Right.
There was store equipment, maybe truck, or something like that. In this, will the new, I guess, facility where the board is going to be, is that part of the structure?
Correct. It would be in that classroom slash training room.
Classroom slash.
Yeah, be very similar to this, only bigger and, you know, slightly more functional.
So is this all a wish list for that particular space?
Correct.
That you.
Yeah, and some of that we've done before in a director carpenter's point, so we do have an architect who's already been working with the training team on putting these elements together. So there is a whole list of training functions that they've tried to achieve. Water recovery is one of them, subsurface, and then per, you know, what we're looking at, I mean, you know, hallways for like an interior of an apartment, exterior things. So there's a whole list of that that I didn't include because we were trying to narrow down, you know, where are we going? We've done a lot of that. I mean, I can certainly bring that back and bring the whole thing into the into the board world, and we can work on that.
Yeah.
Chief, I would just, like, Peter, what do you think is in mind?
So I think based on the comments that I'm hearing, it's almost as if we have to do better planning in terms of what do we want to accomplish, what do we want to get out of this, who do we want to bring in, who can we bring in, who would want to bring, who would want to be in? And so it's kind of going back to how does this fit in, how do we how do we plan this into our, I guess, our overall mission, which I mean, clearly would define, would be part of the mission, but I think we have to have some kind of a plan to think through and answer some of these questions that have been brought out tonight. That's just me. That's not that's not to say I'm against something like this.
No, understood.
Just planning, I think.
I would just, you know, the one one word of caution, and I, you know, it's kind of the world of unintended consequences. At one point, the board years ago was looking at, you know, generating additional revenue, and so part of that strategy was we'll use the space for the cell companies.
Right.
Well, that that, yeah, that went kind of crazy with three companies in here, and then actually we diminished the ability to do training to the point where the tower is almost, in some cases, non-functional.
Right.
So, you know, that I think we're still a little bit leery of.
Right.
Going down that path, you know.
Has the committee done a lot of what you guys have been talking about?
Yeah, there's a lot of drawings and so forth, so, I mean, I didn't include that because we were trying to get to a budget, but.
The one that Mike Schaefer was discussing about what they had come to the conclusion, Mike Schaefer and.
You mean from the last from the last meeting?
Correct.
We had all those schematics, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Peter?
Yeah, I guess I continue to be troubled with, you know, the the chief has described the process of programmatic work that I think is very essential. And and I don't think the question before the board tonight should be option one, two, three, or four. I actually would vote against the motion I made, and what I would suggest instead is that we say to the staff, proceed with the programmatic work you're doing, come back to us when you have a proposal. When you have a particular concept that you want, when you've decided whether it's going to be 1,200 square feet or 800 square feet or two stories high or a basement or whatever, I don't want to give a budget based on the information I have in front of me. I don't want to stop this project. I know a lot of good work's been done, but I think the next phase would be, as we do with the fire station, is you come to us and say, okay, we want to build a three bay fire station, we want to do it in East Palo Alto, this is, and this is a budget for that project, because then you've defined what the project is. Here, based on this staff report, not the work that Mike and his folks have been doing, but based on this staff report, you know.
That's right.
I don't, you know, I don't know what we're buying. I don't know what my choices are between option four and option one in terms of capability and functionality. You're the professionals. You come and say, this is, given the physical space that we've got, and we don't have a huge piece of property here, there are some physical constraints to how much you can build here, come to us and say, okay, here's the simulation center, and these are the things we think ought to be in it, and it's going to be X number, we think it's going to be X number of square feet, and we think it's going to be three stories or four stories tall, and what we now want your approval on is to hire an architect for the for the next phase, for X number of dollars for the architect, rather than saying, ask us to approve a budget for a project that hasn't even been designed yet.
I'd like to add one more point which we haven't mentioned, and I think that parallel to all of this, we should, as soon as possible, schedule a town meeting to be held, to discuss this with neighbors, let them know, in general, you've done enough work, I think, to give them an idea, we can reassure them that there's no live fire, that the smoke is is simulated smoke, and that there's no danger, we believe, from any of that. And the sooner we get them involved and either against it or working with them or something, I think this is going to start getting out there in the press, and people are going to get nervous about it because they don't know what it is. And I just don't want people to be against it because of they're afraid.
But we can't tell them what it is.
But we we know something, so we know that it won't be stuff that's a danger to them.
But that definitely goes to the planning.
I think that when, as we approach the phase where they're going to come back to us with a proposal, you know, at that point, you can do the outreach. Do the outreach right now before that's been sort of, you can't go to the community and say, we want to build something, we don't know what it is.
What, and and are you saying that they should give input as to what it should be?
Yes, I do, because I think if they're saying, we don't care, it's not going to be three stories, sorry, nothing's three story. I I don't know what they're going to say, but we ought to hear it.
Don't open that door, friend, until you know what it is.
Well, we saw it happen in Station 77, where we went in with our plan, and we got all this opposition.
We didn't have a plan. That was the problem.
Well, we had eminent domain.
That's what hurt us.
Plan, and that wasn't even really a plan, but it was perceived as a plan, and that was the problem.
Well, eminent domain restricted your ability to do outreach, which in every other facility we've built, Station Two and Station Six was successful, the community was in favor of what we did, and we did we did outreach, the fire district did the outreach, so.
I just think it's better when we do it rather than let the city of Mellow Park do it.
Totally agree with that.
We will do it, I'm sure we'll do it, but I just don't want to say to the committee, what type of meeting, and and not be able to give them a presentation, say, this is what we want to do, this is what we want to do it, or why we want to do it.
I can tell you from my experience, it just community engagement, you can, you can, the community will design your project, without a doubt. It may not be what you want because there are limitations. It may not be what you want because their limitations that we're looking at, you know, maybe four stories, the community's looking at one story. And so once you lock them into, you know, lock them into this, this one story, it would totally defeat the purpose of the new facility. And I think there needs to be an understanding, accepting of community input, you know, and, and I think what we need to bring in is something to, to be, to look at so that they can begin to kind of visualize whatever reality is going on ahead, what it may look like, bring that to reality of what we're proposing. And it may be acceptable to them, you know, in terms of height, setbacks, and the whole architecture design and the whole thing. But, but if we start, it's all like I have from my grandson, you know, design me something and, you know, draw me something. And when he draws, he inspires me, "Oh, I don't know what that looks like." But, you know, I have to say, "You did a good job," you know? Because I want him, I encourage him to continue to do something. And one day he will get to the point to draw something that makes, makes sense, so.
So I would, I would vote to table the motion.
Do you want to withdraw your...
I could withdraw. Yeah. Withdraw the motion and provide direction to staff.
Yeah, that's what I...
Do you approve that as a second?
Yes.
Okay, so we've withdrawn the motion and approval of the second? So keep moving. Come back to us with the programmatic proposals.
So rather than have multiple options, you want us to come back with our best work?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're not, we don't want to do that.
We don't have the skill to make the decision between one, two, three, and four based on size and, and price. Because I don't know what the functionality of one is versus the functionality of four.
This is Jim Vesper would explain.
Right. Which is cost, which is function, a lot of things. And could be, again, to your point, neighborhood. You know, some are more acceptable than others based upon height and City of Menlo Park and everything else, so. And we're aware of some of that.
Well, you've got a new city council, which I think is going to be much more supportive of the Fire District.
Hope so.
Yeah. So I second the motion.
No, we, oh, we don't have the motion. Withdraw, we provide direction to staff.
So item fourteen...
Okay, we're going down to item fourteen then, which is a twelve-hundred-square-foot accessory structure at Twenty-Eight Almond Drawl Avenue.
Great example. Here's a specific thing they wanted to do. Your surprise.
Also a process, so.
The site plan.
Director, so, uh, you know, the report, I think, goes into yet again another phase within Twenty-Eight Almond Drawl. What we're proposing, uh, as you know, we have not proposed to rebuild the fire station. We don't see that in the immediate future. But we do see utilization of the, of the lot. I know there's been a process for us to go through and, uh, you know, remove vegetation, clean it up because it was quite, it was in need of a lot of deferred maintenance, including the home that's there. We've removed the pool, the fencing, uh, backfilled it now, and of course, are working on the front gates to the property because those also needed a lot of TLC. In fact, they're going to be replaced. So this now gets us to a separate structure behind Station Three, but it proposes to put in underground that would support at some point functionality for a new fire station. Meaning your underground work would be sized to whatever your needs for a new facility would be down the road. So we'd only do basically all your underground utilities be done once. That would be power, sewer, water, and so forth. And then the secondary structure that we're being, we're proposing on there, even if we were to ever sell the other lot, uh, one of the things that we would be able to do with that is, is fence that area off behind the firehouse if you chose to do that. But in terms of functionality today for the fire station, this station has inadequate storage. Station has difficulty with the equipment that we, uh, we service out of there. This is an emergency medical services station, so it has the bulk of the emergency medical equipment stored there and is then redistributed to the other firehouses. So we were looking for a more functional place to do that. Maximum per the city ordinance in both location and sizing is twelve-hundred square feet. And so we propose to do a shell building that would be big enough, as you see on the second page, to house a, a fire engine if we ever again chose to rebuild the facility. This would be a cross-purpose there. And, uh, we would have a restroom in that building, but pretty much nothing else that we've built in any type of permanence into it. So it shows it on that schematic what it would look like. And, uh, it would be aesthetically pleasing. We're not proposing to build something that's ugly or, you know, not aesthetically pleasing to the community. But certainly, you know, cost is an issue, and functionality is the key.
Chief, on attachment A, it shows the secondary structure being kind of in a north-south orientation. But in attachment B, it looks like it's an east-west orientation.
Yeah, that's...
Which one is correct?
The one that we would like to see is the one that you see in the back. So the second one?
B.
B.
B, yeah. So A was an earlier rendition, probably what we were looking at. And I think part of that had to do with underground. And again, even on underground, there may be a way to go at the lot line for Station Three because the longer the distance for any type of utilities below in the ground, the more expense. So, you know, again, without an architect on board, this is, uh, our best unsophisticated rendering of how and what we would try to accomplish. Part of it might have been done just for the functionality. I mean, this is not done by an architect. This is our guys dropping things in a CAD system.
When you said approve, we wouldn't approve this without a budget or something of that sort, right?
That's correct. So we'd get an architect. We'd know what those costs were. We'd go to the city, figure out what the costs were through them, what the approvals would be specifically, which we've already done some of the work on, and then finally have, you know, the ultimate budget for it.
So maybe a better title would have been, "Consider, Discuss, and Give Direction to the Chief." Is that really what you're looking for there?
Yeah, I am looking for direction to move forward.
Okay, Peter? Yeah, that's precisely what I would suggest, is that rather than a motion of approval, now, again, we provide direction of staff saying, "Yes, we are, you know, we're approving the concept. We want you to go ahead with this, and you will come back to us at a future time with, uh, plans, budgets, et cetera." So it's a direction to staff issue?
Like the last, the last item.
Well, it's not a motion because it's direction to staff is not, doesn't need to be a motion.
Yeah, it's like the last item.
Just because consensus amongst us. Chief, Chuck?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking at attachment A. Oh, is the blue, the blue square?
Yes.
So the yellow square is the house, I know, right?
Well, the yellow square would be a new fire station massing if you built it there.
But, oh, so the yellow would be a new fire station?
Correct.
Yeah, and, and the purpose of putting those two on that same thing is to show that by putting this accessory structure, you're not compromising the location, the future location of the fire station. It, the, the accessory structure, it needs to need two requirements. One of which needs to meet Atherton zoning requirements in terms of location and size. And second, if we're smart, we'll do it in such a way that when we build the fire station, we don't have to get rid of this building. Right? It becomes an asset rather than something that has to be torn down. And when you look at B, you know, that makes clear, if you then look at the existing station and the proposed station, proposed station basically is going to be where the existing house is. But attachment B, I mean, the, the accessory structure would be the temporary fire station.
While we build that.
While the station were being built.
Right.
Yellow, but people looks like a big post.
And one of the reasons that we, we did that was because even though you see that the, on the, the first attachment A, you have the yellow, that may be larger at some point if you decide to build a station there. So there could be a need, instead of operating out of Station Three, that you have to tear that down to achieve building the firehouse. So basically, the best of all worlds is build an ancillary structure. You're going to get function and a utility out of it because we need that. But in the meantime, we build it with a thought in mind that if we ever had to use it for a temporary quarters for the apparatus and personnel, that can be done too. So, to the point, it meets all the checkboxes essentially for the future.
Chief, you mentioned something, I guess, on the first page about squaring off the fence?
Correct. So one of the things that we've also been discussing, if we were to rent out the house at some point that's existing on this lot, that we wouldn't want those individuals. We want them to have a backyard, but we could put a fence along the lot line of Station Three to the back fence, and that would then fence off the existing, any addition that we would do. So one of the options still in play is to rent out that house.
And just to be clear, just, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand, but Robert may not, because the, the apron at the back of the fire station, that's the end of the fire station property where the pavement ends.
Correct.
So that ends that. I'm looking at attachment A. So this lot we bought is kind of L-shaped.
It is.
It goes behind the fire station.
Right.
And you would run the fence straight back so that the, it wouldn't, wouldn't, we're not changing the lot line, we're just changing the fence line.
Taking the L, taking the L out of it.
Right. Yeah, yeah. The agenda topic is, is, is what's here. You know, I can just assure you that if you were to put a fence on, on that particular place, you'd have a problem because you're now changing the configuration of an existing lot, which is the one we bought. The accessory structure is explicitly permitted by the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance does not allow us to subdivide that parcel that we purchased. It is the minimum size for that area in Atherton. And you can't make it smaller without going to the town and getting their permission. So, now, my own advice is, and this is going to be a future board that I'm not part of, is, I think just it's, tear the house down and, and forget it. And then move on with this project however you wish. But trying to carve up that new lot into pieces is not going to work, given the zoning that we have.
Did you, you, Harold, that the rear of Station Three, if you wanted to bump out the back and then make parking, because I see there's some parking places there, that if you bumped the back out to make it larger, I don't know, for, for two other bedrooms and a workout room addition or something. You know, um, uh, you could still, with the configuration of that lot, and then make parking where that other structure's going to be?
So, yeah, Director Carpenter's point. So when you deal with the town, I mean, you could do some things on here. The one thing that we all agreed on is we could build an accessory structure and use that. Whether you tear the house down, rent the house, do all kinds of different, put a fence in, which is kind of the next step of exploration and go into what your point is. Nobody says you got to have fences, and nobody says you can't use a piece of property if it's co-joined to the other one. It's only when you start building and doing things where you create these separations that you get into some of these rules. So what's, what is clean is building an accessory structure on here that you use on a piece of property that you own when you own both pieces of property.
But to answer your question, we have, if you look at, if you look at A, we have a fire station that's on that little piece of land. That is a non-conforming structure. Under the zoning code in Atherton, it is non-conforming. You cannot bump it out, you know, because we don't have any unused setback. You know, we have maxed out that land. And, you know, that's it. That's all we can do with that particular piece of land.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Robert, I didn't understand. So you were thinking move, make a Station Three bigger?
And make Station Three bigger, and then, but then that would still be going into the little lot.
Yeah, so we, yeah, that's, we didn't touch Station Three for those very reasons.
So, so I assume if once the, the added station is built, we may be looking at a lot merger then?
At some point, but you limit, so the committee's already looked at this? You limit yourself if you do a lot merger now?
Right, right.
Okay, we don't limit ourselves by building the accessory structure, right? Because accessory structure, if three years from now, if they were going to sell this, we can sell it with the accessory structure on it. It's a conforming structure. It would be built according to the zoning ordinance. It was built with the approval of the town. Still have the other original fire station, Station Three. But once we get to the point where we're going to bill out, then we would merge.
Hence my term evolutionary on this project, right?
Chief, I wanted to ask you, I, I noticed in one of the things you mentioned that you were making a new driveway for the house. Why, why are we doing that?
So the dri, you're talking about what's in there? I don't think we're...
Didn't, didn't, did I, did I misunderstand? I thought you...
Yeah, no, the only thing that I think we were looking at at one point was whether we recessed the gate so you could drive up to it and use a, if you wanted to use a coating item for the house. We decided against that. Everybody else on that street has the gate right on the street line, so we're not changing that. Because we worked on electric...
You're not paving the parking lot or the driveway. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, don't worry, we're not. We may make it a little wider than it is if we use any kind of aggregate or whatever, but that would be it.
But in the future, we, we might want, we'd have to pave the whole area probably, but...
Could be. Depends on what option we choose to go to. I mean, if Director Carpenter mentioned we, you know, we tear the house down, then, you know, I'm not sure what you need to do on there.
Okay. Any other comments on number fourteen?
Grow food on it.
Okay, let's, let's, let's move then to committee reports. Uh, I'll start with the Emergency Preparedness Committee. Robert?
Uh, we did meet this, um, for a variety of reasons, and we focused on it until December, um, to finish up the project we started. So, yeah.
Can, can you give us some idea of what, what do you foresee happening? Or who's going to be involved? Or what's, what's going to happen with the CERT organization? Do you have some vision at this point?
Uh, I, I don't know what's going to happen. On my read on the CERT, what's going to happen to CERT organization part of them, no, it's still going to be around. It may be, we can look at it in a different way than it is right now. But that's some of the conversation that we've had. We have had in the first two meetings, one with the, with the Chief Stevens and Michael, and in the second meeting with the CERT Executive Board, so...
You already met with the board?
Yes, I have. And so it's one of those things where, where now we need to kind of take all this information and kind of look at it and, for what, try to make sense out of it. Because we don't want, if there's a new vision for CERT and then engagement in the community, we need to understand, we don't need to take the same old baggage that's creating issues right now into this new structure. So that's, that's what we have to kind of focus on, probably.
Who would be the, who would be doing that? Would it be the, from the CERT Executive Board itself? Would it be from the committee? Who, who would be restructuring or whatever if it did get restructured?
Well, uh, yeah, I think information about what is positive about CERT needs to continue to be existent. Those things that may not be working well, that could be working a little differently or better, those are the things that we want to, I think, we are trying to focus on, try to improve. And, and whether, who makes that final decision? I think hopefully it's, it's evolved into an understanding from everybody in the board to the community.
The executive board or our board?
Well, this board. Because I think, I think it seems like somewhere there, when we got here, it seemed like there was conversation, "Oh, the board don't know what's, what's going on." I mean, I think that's where it put, having the CERT, um, Chairperson start coming and making presentations of what would I understand? So there's no confusion and no miscommunication that's going on. That's just one element. But I think in terms of overall structure of how the, how the board, how they, that piece function, I think it should be a collaborative effort of those, everybody, I'm talking about, from the board to, to, to program manager, to CERT Executive Board, to, to the community. Because that's the ultimate end user or beneficiary of what we do here, I think, at, with CERT. So I don't, I don't think it's, you know, we can go, Chief's the chief, you make the decision, you know, here it stops, here it there. But, you know, I mean, there's input all along the continuum of, of what going to... the continuum of what going to make a board a good, sorry.
Don't we have an annual election at the CERT board level that's supposed to happen in December?
Right.
And will that take place as usual?
You know, it will, it has, it's going on, going right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have anything else? I'd say basically up to the, the CERT board, you know, within their organization, to have their elections and kind of provide direction for us as an emergency prep committee as to where they want to go, what's their next step, you know. I think they need to, like, we have the ADAPT, which is a great CERT board, and there are other segments within, and Robert knows a lot more than I do about this, but I just feel like as a group, they need to tell me what they need resource-wise, and we'll bring it to the board. And I think Robert's done a really good job at getting those steps to go forward, to see, to help them make that type of decision.
We need a fluid program, right now it's not fluid, right?
Not fluid?
Not fluid, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I would make the observation, I think that for a variety of reasons, we've created an organizational structure which lacks fluidity. The great strength of the ADAPT program, the great strength of what you guys are building in East Palo Alto, is that it is from the bottom up, not the top down. And we still have not yet dealt with the management challenge of trying to figure out how you bridge the gap between a good bottom-up organization and a highly centralized, quasi-military organization like Fire District. It's one of these things where you just let a thousand flowers bloom and then figure out how you're going to fertilize and how you're going to make it work. I'm not sure that the present organizational structure that we tried to put in place for CERT works, and we may just have to say, hey, it was a good attempt to try to bridge the gap, but we need to do something else. But most importantly, we need to encourage those thousand flowers to bloom in East Palo Alto, in Atherton, and somehow in Menlo Park, so that we get dynamic neighborhood organizations that are well organized, and then we have the ability to figure out how to connect with them, which is still an unresolved issue.
I'm confident we'll get there, you know, we may not get there tomorrow, but I'm confident we'll get there, because I think we're on the right track. And I think everything that I've talked to is open for change, open for new ideas, which is a good sign, because you can be closed, and once you have an unclosed door along the continuum, then it's hard to change. But I'm very confident we're going to change.
HR Committee?
Yeah, I mean, we met, Robert and I met, and basically what we discussed tonight for the chief's evaluation is what we discussed, so thank you for helping us move forward with the chief's evaluation as quickly as possible. Anything to add, Robert?
No, I think you did a, you did a great job.
Thank you.
On the committee report, so.
And again, we'll bring the timeline, if needed, back to the board policies and procedures review time in June-ish, May of June.
Peter, Finance Committee?
Yeah, most of what the Finance Committee dealt with has been forwarded to you in actions that you've acted on this evening. The one thing that wasn't included in an action was, in anticipation of the joint meeting of the Fire Board and Town Council, we did review the matrix report, and we determined that the committee has no basis for making any recommendations to the board.
Chuck, do you have anything to add to that? No, I think, I think we decided that the conversations should proceed in January as it proceeds, and we will see, I think, I think we felt that we should listen to what the folks in Atherton have to say, and what they're interested in pursuing, and respond accordingly.
Okay, yeah.
And I'll say something similar, Peter said about the Strategic Planning Committee. We met, we discussed things that were on the agenda tonight, and there's nothing, there's nothing that we haven't discussed, other than what was here tonight. So, that's, that's all that I have there. Rob, did you have any reports on any of your liaison meetings? Okay. As president, there was nothing that I did that was, I have some directors for things, but nothing as president that I did that was presidential. So, we'll move on to the directors' reports, and Peter, I'll start at your end this time. For the directors' report?
No.
Virginia?
Not a whole lot, but I do want to do a shout-out to, I think, is this the B shift? The one that's on today? Chris Pittman, tell, I think it is.
Uh, good question, you're right, it is B shift.
Okay, great, so, I was at the Peninsula Volunteers Luncheon on Monday, November 5th, and we had an incident there, and I had to call 911, so we were the incident. And the shift, the B shift folks came, and they were great. And this event was at the Circus Club, and I just want to do a shout-out to the B shift, but also to let you know, Harold, that the Circus Club really values what we do. The general manager told me to tell you hi, so hi.
Right.
They want a simulation facility?
Well, I passed them.
I doubt it.
Because I do have his card now.
Right where the flu is.
So, we were, the two of us were, I called 911, and when I was on the phone, they said, oh, someone else had called, and so, we were both working in tandem. They were, they were very, very nice, and they liked what we do, and so, maybe there could be opportunities to work, and they have a great facility, obviously.
Okay.
That's it.
Rob, do you have anything as director?
Yeah, I attended the CERT Journal Stankers on October 18th. Tom and his group did an excellent job there. 10/19, I did the Good Morning Good with the Breakfast with your Chair of Commerce. It was a presentation by their new police chief, David Mahoney, and quite interesting their perspective as to community policing. And so, on November 8th, I attended the Veterans Luncheon with...
With...
Yeah, we were there, and we had interacted with Warren Slocombe, Horace Lee, Kevin Mooney, Mark Burks. So, we actually made it into a little bit of the interaction liaison with them. And at Facebook, on the 30th, they connect a team, which is Sammy Taylor County's yearly tech conference. And again, Warren Slocombe was there in the office, we had all the usual suspects. And I finally attended, on the 11th, the World War I historical ceremony that the Historical Society in Menlo Park, that I, at Fremont Park. Very well, well done by Jim Lewis, his group.
Okay, Robert?
I don't have any special activities that I attended that I can recall, but my mind's focused on other things. But I do have a request, or at least some clarification. And hopefully I can articulate this in a way that, that it comes out clear and precise. And that request is that last year, when, you know, I was appointed, that we went through this situation where, that we brought up about any new individuals getting elected to the board, that would undergo the same level of review prior to coming on the board. And so, through the chair, I would like to know if that same, assuming high-level standard, will apply for this newly elected group, excluding myself, so I won't throw it, or do I have to go back and do it again? So, I would like to understand through the chair, if we're going to achieve, go through that same process, because I was, clearly it was special for that appointment, and it was, the understanding was that if future board members would go through that same process. So, if we talk about today, or prior to those new elected members coming aboard, I think you need to, I'm seeking clarification on how the chair is going to proceed with that.
Well, I would actually say we need to be consistent, I'll add that.
Let me address the issue, because there's a slight, there's some differences here, so let's just be clear. First of all, the election process is something that the board itself has, has no ability to deny or change or alter. And the feeling is that in the election process, where people file papers in July, and they're scrutinized for several months by newspapers, and through meetings, and the ability for people to look into their background, it's an extended process. What we brought up at the time related to the idea of an appointment where the board was making the decision, not in public. So, this was, this was related to a board decision in a very compressed time period. I think it was in the board's interest that we be consistent, so, and as I understand, this is an incomplete thing from the Human Resources Committee, that you were going to finalize the procedure for any future where the board made appointments to fill a vacancy, we were going to have a procedure, and that's something that's really on your agenda?
No, the board approved a procedure. Yeah.
We've done that.
I thought we approved it for, there were two pieces of it, one we did and one we didn't do. In other words, there were two positions where we would appoint.
No, we both, we did both the resident reps and also the appointments.
Okay, then I, I see. Those were the two parts, the resident rep appointment, which we make, and an appointment to a vacancy, which we make. And so, we have done that, but it wouldn't affect the electoral process, which we have no control over.
I don't think that's not what he's talking about.
What I would say was that any board director come aboard, whether appointed or elected, that the board wanted a background check on the individual. Whether you're appointed or elected, I think the point is, what I would make reference to that, you want to make sure that no one had a serious personal background, whether they're appointed or whether they're elected.
Chuck? Go ahead.
As one of the first people who's adamantly opposed to the background check procedure, I will affirm what Director President Bernstein said. We have no authority to do anything with respect to people who've been duly elected by the residents of this district to serve on this board. They serve because the people have elected them to serve, we don't have veto rights, we have no, we can't put any conditions on it, et cetera. Your understanding is not what I understood from the discussion. I understood at the time that we were applying that standard to appointed people, because we don't have the ability to apply it to elected people. I, again, say, I think the procedure was inappropriate, but we disagreed on that, and I got outvoted on it.
Could I suggest, though, I think it might be something to put on the Human Resources Committee, if you would like to discuss it, because we did, I mean, if you're suggesting that what we've put there for appointed members is inappropriate, then I think we always can revisit it, so I would suggest that you put it on the committee agenda.
So, I'd like to remind that, though, that the HR Committee is the one that brought the procedure to the board, and then it was approved by the board, so we're just rehashing something that you guys had already put together and brought to the board, so you can do that, but we're just repeating something that we just finished.
No, I can only speak for myself.
Go ahead, Rob.
No, I can only speak for myself, and to make a determination to appoint someone is one thing, and if the elect, which is Peter said, you know, makes a decision, well, I mean, I mean, I know a few congressmen that are convicted felons that are sitting members of Congress, so, I mean, that's not our decision to do that, but if I myself am sitting on the board and I'm, you know, making an appointment decision, I just want to be sure that, since I'm making a decision for the populace, that I, that I just have that information. It has nothing to do with the elections, if someone's elected, someone's elected.
Well, I don't really think it's about that, I think this...
Chuck?
No, I mean, I don't want to cut off Virginia.
No, go ahead, Tim, I have a whole different take on this.
Okay, I was just going to make the statement that I really do think that a further discussion of this item should either be referred to a committee or brought back to the board, just because of procedurally where we are at the moment in the meeting.
Right.
Like, it's, and I think, and I want to speak for a director, but, you know, he raised an issue, I think if there's a forum for it, it should not be tonight. It should be either a committee referral or an item for a future...
Because it's on the agenda.
Exactly.
That's right.
Exactly, and not, like you said, okay.
Yeah.
So, do you want to hold your comment then?
Yeah, I mean, but I just think that we're a little off-topic, and I'm not even sure we've addressed Robert's real issue here.
You know, at this point in my life, all I know is I'm going to say what I have to say. No, see, some things tend to flow back at you in a different way.
Yeah.
If you deliver it in the first moment, and so, I'm just saying that, you know, what I hear in my community about the process, people say, you know...
I know what you're saying, Robert.
I just want to make you, for us to be clear about moving forward, what are you going to do?
Well, I'll just...
If it's just on an appointment piece, great, believe it, but...
Can we put this on the, can we put this on the Human Resources agenda?
I'm done with that, I'm just saying what I had to say. I'm just saying, wait, they come back at you in a different way, be aware of it. I can't stand it, I'm just going to go.
Did you have anything more to report, or, okay?
He was proper.
I had just, just two items as a director. I worked at the CERT recruitment desk on October 20th at the Woodland Park Fair. They had a fair that was just kind of down the street, it was on the north side of university, down past the Four Seasons Hotel and so forth. Woodland Park is the major rental group in East Palo Alto. I think they have a majority of the rental units in the whole city. They certainly have, like, 80% of the ones on the west side. They're a major, major force, and one of these days, it's going to be a huge controversy, because they're going to want to go four stories and add 5,000 residents, and it's going to, and gentrify, and it's going to be a big issue some way.
That's out there.
But right now, they're doing a very good job, they created a park there, they bought a property, created a park, they've created a couple parks, actually. They've created a couple parks, actually. Anyway, it was a very nice fair. They do a very good job of getting people there. They had barbecue, they had lots of people, they had booths and so forth. Lot of people interested in emergency services, signing up. I think I got 10 or 12 people on the signup list. The following week, I did another fair in East Palo Alto at another church over there on Bay Road. It's another Baptist church out there on Bay Road, ACTERA, which is the environmental group. They had the, the kind of the electric cars and the, what do you call it? The solar panels and all this kind of stuff. And again, quite a nice turnout, and a lot of people interested in what we're doing. I'm just saying that there's a lot of interest in the community about our trainings and so forth. I think I got a mailing list of another 10 or 15 people there and so forth. So, all of that is very positive. One of the new council people in East Palo Alto was there, her husband was there, Stanford graduates and so forth. And I think, I think East Palo Alto's doing a very good job of getting people organized and so forth. So, I was very pleased with that. That's constitutes, that's the end of my report on all that. This is time for any proposed agenda items. Anything anybody wants to put on the agenda for our next meeting? Okay, I'll go to public comment number two, three. Any public comment?
Pardon me? We've all left, except for Jim.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn? Peter?
I moved first.
Peter seconded. Okay, all in favor, say aye. Pose. Okay, five zero on the trip. The meeting is adjourned.